We have a quick proclamation that reads as follows. It essentially talks about small business. Whereas the government of the city of Des Moines believes small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the glue that holds communities together. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28 million small businesses in the United States. They represent more than 99 percent of American companies and create two-thirds of the net new jobs and generate half of the private gross domestic product. And whereas small businesses employ half of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 93 percent of the U.S. consumers believe it's important to support the local small businesses that they value in their community, and 89 percent -- these are numbers that usually you don't get to see anywhere -- agree that locally-owned, independent businesses contribute positively through taxes and jobs. And whereas the city of Des Moines supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups in public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of our city council and all of our citizens in the city of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 24th, 2012, as Small Business Saturday, and urge all of our residents in our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. So hopefully, everybody will get out this Saturday, and if you've got some shopping to do, buy local. Thank you, and we'll start our meeting in a couple minutes.
No, they finally got it up. City clerk, and I run the city.
Yeah, yeah, should be. Yeah, okay, thanks.
City clerk, or Hall one clerk, and I run the city.
Right.
They're gonna bring it up. Before you shut down, we'll set you. Turn it up here. It's like, uh, it's like five days when I sent, but I'm not reading all the words.
Let's call to order the municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting for November 19th. I'll ask the clerk to please take role.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Mahappy?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a forum.
Item two is to receive and file the fiscal year 2012 Section 8 Management Assessment Program, SEMAP certification, high performer rating from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD, Board of Communication number 12-575. Anybody here to speak on this item? Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I simply want to acknowledge the good work on the part of our Housing Services Department in getting this certification of high performance from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's a positive report, I'm pleased to see it, and we're happy to have it on the agenda.
All right. We have a motion.
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Item passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn? That's the only item on the agenda.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We sit adjourned. Prior to our city council meeting this evening, we're gonna have a word from our own city council member, Chris Coleman, and for those who would like to participate with us, we'd ask you to stand at this time.
A timely, short reflection. Not only across America is there a movie sweeping the country about Abraham Lincoln, he was also the first person to formally proclaim Thanksgiving Day as a federal holiday. And when he did it, it was at the close of the Civil War. And I was gonna read the proclamation that he wrote that year to designate Thanksgiving. Obviously, things are never perfect in our country, or in every corner of our country, but we always have much to be thankful for. So this is from 1864. "The year that is drawing towards a close has been filled with the blessings of fruitful fields and healthy skies. To these bounties which are so constantly enjoyed that we are prone to forget the source from which they come. Others have been added which are of such extraordinary nature that they cannot fail to penetrate and soften even the heart, which is habitually insensitive to an ever-watchful and providence God. In the midst of a civil war of unequal magnitude and severity, which has sometimes seemed to foreign states to invite and provoke their aggression, peace has been preserved with all nations, order has been maintained, the laws have been respected and obeyed, and harmony has prevailed everywhere except in the military theater. And even in that theater, it is greatly contracted by the advancing armies and navies of the Union. Needful diversions of wealth and of strength of the fields of peaceful industry to the national defense have not arrested the plow, the shuttle, or the ship. The Axis enlarged our borders for settlements around the country, and the mines, as well of iron and coal of the precious metals, have yielded even more abundantly than heretofore. It has seemed to me fit and proper that they should be solemnly, solemnly, reverently, and gratefully acknowledged, as with one heart and one voice by the whole American people. I do therefore invite my fellow citizens in every part of the United States, and also those that are at sea, and those that are sojarring in foreign lands, to set apart and observe the Fourth Thursday of November as a day of Thanksgiving and praise for all that we are thankful for." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Let's call the November 19th Des Moines City Council meeting to order, and I ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahappy?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a forum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion, any amendments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 28. They're routine items that are generally enacted by one vote unless somebody asks to have one called or pulled for a purpose of discussion or clarification. And this evening, of those items, County and Moore vote no on item number five. Item number nine, Councilmember Moore votes no. And item 17, I have pulled for discussion. Mrs. Hensley would like to comment on it as well. Are there any other items? Again, three through 28, that anyone would have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a motion for the balance, please?
Move.
It's been unanimously moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Takes us to item 17. Item 17 is just setting a date of hearing, and it's probably this evening, we're not gonna get anything resolved, but it's on the application of a certificate of public convenience and necessity by Crown Cab Company to operate a taxi cab service with five vehicles, and we've set the -- or the hearing is to be set for 12-3 of this year. I would like to ask the city manager and the city attorney to please review, not particularly this specific application, which was before us in exactly the same form on September 24th of this year, but to look at the policies that we have in place, often in review of rezonings or other types of application. It's appropriate to wait six months or a year after something gets turned down. I'd, I think, like to have a presentation, or at least a discussion, or an opinion from staff as to how we might initiate that same kind of process for this purpose of operation of taxi cab services well. I don't know, hopefully their circumstances have changed significantly, because I'd be hopeful that we wouldn't be listening to the same hearing we did in September. But, Ms. Hensley?
The only item I would add would be, I agree with all of your comments and your recommendations, but it appears that the application maybe was not filled out as completely as it could have been, so this is an opportunity for them to come back and provide additional information, and I'm not sure that's a process that we want to go through, and I would be supportive of having us look at coming back once a year, once something has been denied based upon what we do at plan and zoning, or something similar. So I will move it based upon the discussion and the recommendation from the mayor.
And refer to appropriate staff.
Correct.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Quick, we had a -- yes.
Is common, is possible to comment?
Absolutely. Step forward.
Thank you. I'm James Sheetz, speaking on behalf of Crown Cab. The initial application was not completed well in terms of -- I think there were some cultural differences in terms of what we deem appropriate business professional literacy in filling out an application. I think this application is substantially improved and perfected in terms of issues that were prior objected upon, and I think it warrants further review in the sense that the early one, the applicant was new to the process, didn't understand it, and--
Mr. Sheetz, I understand that, and we are setting date of hearing, so all that will be presented--
Okay.
In 12-3, so I appreciate your comment.
Okay.
It sounded like maybe we're gonna get off into, you know, why this application is better at this point.
No.
We'll hear that the third.
Certainly.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your comment. Any other comments about setting the date of hearing? All right, seeing none.
Seven, yes.
All right. That completes our consent agenda and takes us to item 29. Item 29 is an ordinance second consideration, which is on the rezoning of 4312, 4282, 4250, 4216, East 50th Street, from limited M1 light industrial to R3 multifamily residential to allow the development of up to 200 residential apartments. This requires six votes for approval. Council Communication number 12-589. And we will open the hearing with Mr. Ludwig.
Mayor, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. Just a brief overview, once again, the subject property is located on East 50th Street, north of what would be an extension of Aurora Avenue. This is East 46th Street that connects up to Hubble Avenue. It's an industrial park currently zoned M1, and they are requesting to rezone these four lots from M1 to an R3 designation. You have the Summers Field, single-family residential portion of the PUD, just to the west of the subject property. Again, just an overview of the area. Property, subject property is crosshatched here on this drawing. This is 50th Street. This is Aurora Avenue. This is northeast 46th, or east 46th and Hubble. As pointed out, at the last meeting, you have the bypass, 65 bypass running along the east edge of this entire area. There's over 200 acres of land in this area. As we have pointed out in the past, staff, both traffic and transportation and community development staff, believe that the extension of Aurora Avenue is critical to the development of this entire area. There can be no access gained from Highway 65. That leaves the only east-west connections back to Des Moines coming from basically Douglas Avenue and Aurora Avenue being equally spaced between Douglas and Hubble, or Hubble and Northeast Broadway. If Aurora Avenue is not extended in the future, all of this traffic from this 200-and-some acres is forced to come south to basically Douglas Avenue and then west to get to Des Moines. I think there were comments at the last meeting also about emergency access in the future, et cetera, indicating the importance of Aurora Avenue. What we've tried to show is, again, this would be the subject site, so just south of that is a vacant agricultural field, and what we tried to show in this drawing is what an extension of Aurora Avenue could look like if it were in a straight alignment from the existing Aurora Avenue and proposed to be a future improved Aurora Avenue. In this type of just conceptual alignment, all of these lots would front off of north-south streets that would tee into Aurora Avenue. Aurora would be a residential collector street, and in having these lots oriented towards the north-south streets, you would avoid having any driveways that would front onto that collector and would help with traffic flow and not have conflicts of cars backing out on driveways onto that collector, residential collector. This in the drawing is northeast 50th Street, which exists today. Once again, it's just conceptual, but it does show the ability to then further extend Aurora Avenue to the east and how planned and proposed street networks could be extended from various sections to help develop that area in the future. If there is no obligation on Hubble Development's part to participate in the construction of Aurora Avenue extension, basically the roadway would be forced to extend south instead of a straight alignment along the two properties. That would put the burden of constructing that entire roadway on the developer to the south. It would also, because they would likely not want to have single-loaded street, it would force us to have probably 20 or so single-family lots that would have direct access onto that residential collector street and have driveways that would access that collector street. Hubble did show, at least at a conceptual or pre-application stage, the extension of Aurora-- Aurora, how it could work with their plan. When it was discussed about how many units could be built without building that, the fire code would state that 200 units would be the threshold, and so the current proposal is just under 200 units. We believe that putting all 200 units on 50th Street with the industrial development that is there, taking all of that traffic out to a non-signal-controlled intersection of 50th Street, northeast 50th Street and Broadway, could cause problems in the future for that intersection. So we do believe that Aurora is important. This was a revised sketch, which was conceptually for the 200 units on the property with only having an access off of 50th Street. This was the consent map, showing properties within 250 feet of the subject property. Due to the percentage of opposition, there is more than 20% opposition to this rezoning request. It would trigger a 6/7ths vote of the city council to approve the rezoning. Just very quickly going back to the first map that I showed, which was, again, this area, the blue letter did point out that it is approximately 1,300 feet from East 46th Street to the east edge of the Summersfield PUD. Currently, northeast Aurora Avenue turns at East 40, I think it's 7th Street here. So it does not continue even to the easternly boundary of Summersfield. There are no access drives from Summersfield onto Aurora. At the time that development was approved, Hubble Development did dedicate right-of-way along there, but there was also an agreement that we would not assess those future residential lots for any construction of Aurora Avenue. This residential subdivision to the south is a county subdivision, and so we believe that the city could be obligated for at least 1,300 feet of the 2,600 feet of Aurora Avenue that's necessary to get to the eastern edge of the Broadway Business Park. The total project cost is estimated between $2.1 and $3.2 million from East 46th to here. So assuming half of that at least would be city responsibility, that is not in our current CIP and would need to be programmed for reconstruction of Aurora Avenue in that point. What we're really concerned about is what do we do from the eastern boundary of Summersfield going to the eastern boundary of Broadway Business Park? That's another 1,300 feet, and we believe that it's more appropriate to have that roadway aligned between these three property owners to where those three property owners would share in that cost for construction rather than causing that roadway to be shifted entirely onto this parcel and putting that burden on one property owner to build that collector At the last meeting, you approved first reading and asked that we meet with the developer on that. We did. It did indicate concern with having any portion of the roadway assessed or assigned to their project. It was indicated their project would be put in jeopardy if that were to occur. We still believe that it is an important roadway connection, and at a minimum, we believe that right-of-way should be dedicated for a portion of the roadway and that in this instance, we should not enter into an agreement that would waive any right to a future assessment. Because the project cost is not in the CIP, it is going to be a couple of years before we can program that into the CIP unless there are changes. And we believe that one way of constructing that would be through an assessment project to a proportionate cost to the adjoining property owners. So with that, I'm available if you have additional questions. Thank you.
Counsel, questions?
Yeah, Mike, that information I sent you from 2005, I think it was, had you and Steve had an opportunity to discuss that since you received it?
At the meeting that we had with representatives from Hubble Development, we did indicate that we were aware of those documents. We were aware that the city had waived its right to assess for the eastern 1,300 feet of Aurora Avenue. We, we have an agreement that says we cannot assess those residential lots in that development. There may also be issues with trying to assess existing county lots for that roadway improvement.
Have you talked to county at all?
We have not.
Okay, we'll see. When Steve comes up, I'll ask him if he has, so.
Any other questions? All right. Mike, thank you. All right, other speakers?
Mr. Mayor and counsel, Steve Nieber with Hubble Realty Company, 6900 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa. Quickly, just a brief overview again of what we're proposing. A project called Broadway Heights is a mixed-use project of both market rate and probably a tax credit phase. There'll be 90 units proposed for market rate and 96 units for tax credit. They will share an amenity package that will have a fitness center and media center, business center, clubhouse, et cetera, for a total of 186 units in total. This is similar to a project that we have completed in Grimes. I'll show you a few pictures of that, which is also a mixed-use project. Has a market rate phase and also a tax credit phase. Buildings are identical. They share the amenity package in the clubhouse. That's what we're proposing for this location. You can see it's, it essentially all looks as though a market rate project. Really, we're down to two issues on this project. One is the assertion that it is isolated. I think some of the issues that were brought up is access to the school. Again, we've come up with a plan that would have a sidewalk connection to the school from our project, tie into Summersfield, and continue through the Summersfield sidewalks to the school that's nearby. We've also offered to extend a sidewalk along northeast 50th, along the undeveloped lots up to the bus stop along Broadway. As a point of reference, the Super Target, Super Walmart, and over 35 stores that are up in the Altoona area across the bypass are just a half mile away. If you look at the River Point West or even River Point, that would be a similar distance to the downtown services. So IFA, for instance, requires a one-mile radius for services. So I would argue it is not isolated. It is very similar to other developments within the metro, very similar to single-family homes in that area for their services. The other issue is the extension of Aurora Avenue. We did meet last week with staff. Really, the only solution that was talked about is an extension of Aurora and an assessment of one-half of that cost to the project. It wasn't clear on when that would potentially get put in or who would pay for the other half. So short of just writing a check for one-half of the improvements, I'm not sure what that solves at this point. Doesn't sound like the, it's in the CIP to improve it all the way out to northeast 46th. So I'm not sure what that does as far as a solution. Show you a map of, this is the plan that was brought up in 2006, as far as a master plan for the area. It had the turnaround. It does connect to our northeast 50th. It does have a roll of lots and then a connection to Aurora that could occur in the future. I would argue that that plan is much more achievable because there are 283 lots, single-family lots, to the south that that cost can be spread over. Our project can't afford to assume one-half of the cost of Aurora at this time. There's also a concern that's been mentioned as far as connection of, to the 200 acres to the east. This plan, which I just showed you the blow-up of, shows connection points in three locations. I've superimposed that over the vacant area, undeveloped area. So there will be, under this plan, three connection points to the east when it's implemented. The neighbors don't want the connection right now. The school doesn't want the connection right now. And the fire department has said that we can build up to 200 units safely on northeast 50th as far as access. There is also a note as far as tax ramifications of this project versus the existing M1 ground. We looked at that. If you look at what the project across the road on 50th from the ground were rezoning, what it's assessed at, this site right here, and project that over four lots, what the taxes we pay by industrial project of that size versus what we'll pay for apartments, we actually pay $25,000 more per year in taxes for our four apartment lots than what the M1 ground would generate. So I would argue that the tax implications are basically the same.
Does that number include the taxes paid by the market rate?
Yes.
Buildings?
Yes. Both have, would have five, potentially, you know, have a, the industrial is a five-year, so.
Right.
The bottom line is, the project isn't feasible if we have to pay for half of Aurora. I think there's a, there was a plan agreed to in 2006, this plan. Obviously, staff has changed their mind. At that time, they said it was a, Aurora was a local residential street, and all of a sudden, it's a collector. If we do nothing, Aurora won't get connected. So it really gets down to the fact that we can have a project that makes sense, has a plan to connect to Aurora in the future, or we can leave an M1 ground with no current right-of-way or means to connect to Aurora. That's really what it comes down to.
Would there be a way that you could look at as additional development comes online that you would be willing to participate? So that it would be a shared expense?
Development of the M1 lots.
Right. As you look at some of that other vacant land there and this other land, are you saying that you own all of that other vacant lot?
We do not own this.
Okay, so.
We do not own this, and we do not own this. All we own is this.
Right there, okay.
This, this. Actually, most of this is taken. There's one lot over here. There's two lots north here, and then the apartment project. So the bulk of the, the land is not controlled by us.
But I, would you be willing to participate? I mean, you know, just thinking long-term-wise, because the city doesn't have it in their CIP budget, is that something that, once there was a certain threshold that was met that Hubble?
If I could see, like, on a per-acre basis, so it was equitable?
Right.
For the area that's being accessed, if we could see what that would look like, I think that's something we'd take a look at. It would seem to be more equitable than us just paying half for.
I agree.
The whole apartment project, when there's.
Yeah, I agree.
200-plus acres.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
I, I think that's a good way to be looking at it, and I would think that we ought to continue to look with staff and try to bring both county into this and see if there's any funding that they could come up with as far as addressing the Aurora Street. And, you know, not necessarily is it going to happen tomorrow, but, you know, sometime in the future when, when the funds can be in the CIP and, and also they get to the point of having their properties complete over there, so.
I might, this is a very challenging project. I think you heard this morning, there just aren't market rate projects being developed without some form of subsidy in anywhere in Des Moines. We're trying to do this without subsidy, and to place another burden on this just makes our mountain that much steeper to climb. So I just, market rate does not stand on its own typically, and we've already, you know, we're, we're somewhat of a pioneer in this area for market rate, so I, I have to tread lightly on how much we can try to absorb as far as additional costs, because we're not asking for any form of subsidy.
I assume you're going to pursue this as taxed as residential?
Uh, yes. That's the only way it works. But even at that rate, Mr. Mahaffey, looking at the taxes, they would be equal to what the M1 would generate.
I'm going to ask the manager to comment. I would ask everybody to please check your cellphones and make sure they're off, out of respect to speakers in, in the meeting in progress. Mr. Manager?
Is that another speaker back here?
Sir, are you prepared to speak on this one? Probably not. Mr. Manager?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, there are three points that I want to suggest to you are particularly important here. Mike Ludwig has talked about these a little bit. The first thing is, the paving of the street is really essential to the future development of this area, not only for, for allowing adequate access to a very large area of vacant ground that is now within the city courtesy of an annexation that occurred not too many years ago, but also in terms of getting emergency vehicles into and out of this area. It's really important that the street be paved at some point. If it's not paved as part of the development process, it will become a burden of the city. So dealing with it now is really the appropriate thing to do. The second thing that's important, and Mike mentioned this, that the section of street, I think it's about 1,300 feet, that adjoins a Hubble-developed property on the north side, by agreement, the city has already agreed to pick that up. And that's a cost of, I don't know, a million and a half dollars or more that you're already in, on the hook to do. What's at, at stake here is the paving of the portion of Aurora that abuts the Hubble property. And as Mike Ludwig pointed out, there are, there's a major property to the south, and there's another property adjacent to the Hubble property. All three of those, under some sort of a cost-sharing agreement, might be able to find a way to make the paving of the street cost-effective for those three parties. And as was, was suggested a moment ago, there are certainly techniques to prorate that cost among those properties. Assessment techniques do that for you, because essentially, under assessment, you assess the cost based on the value of the property. It is a fair and equitable way to apportion those costs. So again, paving of the street is important for the future development of this area, and that includes the access of emergency vehicles. And secondly, I believe there is a way, if the parties are willing, to apportion those costs in a, in a fair and reasonable way. And it may be that those costs don't have to be incurred in day one. Maybe we can have an agreement that allows the paving of that street to occur as other development occurs, maybe over, you know, over some period of time. But it's really important that the city be aware of these costs that we're incurring, and if we don't address it now, eventually, the street will have to be paved, and it will incur all its city cost if we don't think about it right now.
Rick, on the points you're making right now, you say if the parties are willing, and if they aren't willing, it becomes our cost. Is this not any kind of project that we can impose an assessment on?
Mr. Coleman, councilmembers, yes, I think you could do, you could impose an assessment, but under the laws of the state of Iowa, you, you essentially go through a process where you have to get the consent of the adjoining owners, and that leaves open whether or not you would be successful in that endeavor. You might be able to force it through at some point in the future, but it would be a question mark. There, there is a, there is a technique, which the attorneys will describe better than I can, sort of a petition of waiver, where the property owners would, in effect, waive their right to opposition. So it's conceivable that under the laws today, you could come up with an agreement that would allow for the imposition of an assessment that was, in effect, sort of pre-approved at some future date.
I don't, I don't have any idea the perspective of the other people that would both benefit and are along this proposed roadway. But I, I think if each of them had the same spirit that Steve with Hubble shared, you know, a willingness to look at a prorated or some sort of assessment or value or size of lot kind of an assessment, if everybody agreed with that, we would be able to pave it. So I'm less probably worried right now about the Hubble company than I am about the other people who just haven't been here to voice. I don't have any reason to doubt it, but it would seem to me that the city should, you know, both be working to try and make market rate housing happen and make sure that we don't get, I mean, one of the reasons we want market rate housing is because it pays taxes. If all that taxes, plus even more, are consumed, paved, and a lot, so they can build them, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Mr. Coleman, I, if, from my standpoint, this is a worthy project to see if we can find a way to make ends meet here. I think from a staff perspective, we simply want to make you aware of this cost burden that's out there, but do I think there are some creative ways to address something important? I, I think so. It does, it does require the cooperation of all the parties, however. And so if the council is willing to allow us to continue to pursue that, we would be happy to continue to work with Hubble and the other property interests to see if we can find a solution for you. But I, but I do want to emphasize, in my view, it's really important that we get this issue addressed.
We, we, this is the second reading, we gather, again, in a couple of weeks. Is it possible to begin those conversations and see where we are? I mean, I don't, I don't want to seriously delay their ability of being in the ground next season.
I, Mr. Coleman, I think it's possible to begin those conversations and come back in two weeks and give you some preliminary view as to whether or not we think some agreement is feasible. is feasible. In my experience, it's probably not likely that we could craft a legally binding document on all the parties by that time period, given the holiday in the middle, but we would certainly do our very best to look at all the options and come back with the best answer we could within that timeframe. No guarantees, but we will do our best if that's the council's.
Bob, with all respect to you and your knowledge and, you know, representing the specific word, I, I'll just tell you, I tend to support the second reading, but would still like to reserve our options of trying to figure out what we do before the third.
Well, I certainly will support the second reading, but we still have an opportunity to the third reading, and hopefully, the city and Steve and Hubble, they can all get together and come up with some way that we hopefully can address the Aurora Street.
And I would agree with that. I'm supportive of that. I think it's important that we find a solution to this, because it is a good project. My question would be, on this property being annexed in, was it unincorporated?
Yes.
Okay, so then, the county clearly, I believe, should be a part of the discussion as well.
Well, we can pry.
I think, and then also, the south side of Aurora there is still county.
Right.
Chief DeKipp?
Yes, it is.
If you've got a moment, there was a reference regarding the support of fire regarding this. I'd sort of like to, for the general public's knowledge, maybe you could give us a update on fire's opinion on Aurora Street?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, John DeKipp, Chief of the Fire Department. I spoke during the first reading and really didn't speak to the project itself. It's within the fire code guidelines. My comments were more to the overall planning. We talk a lot about the 1,300 feet and the difference in distance between the end of Aurora and East 50th Street, and my comments last time was that, my comment was, this is the point in time when we look back and say, do we fill the area with whatever the developments are, if they're all within the guidelines, irrespective of our ability to do other things? And if we do not extend Aurora across to the things that Mr. Ludwig described, we're limited for access to there. For fire response, if we do not do something with Aurora, we will drive miles to go 900 to 1,300 feet to get to a fire or an EMS call, and I just want all of council to have that policy process and how you want that to go, to look going forward, so we don't look back and say, wow, we did a lot of development, but we did not prepare for the safety of citizens in this area. Just wanted to make sure that that was on your plate.
Oh, thank you, and that's, wanted to have your opinion on record again. Bob?
Yep. Well, I really like the project. I think it's something to be very positive for that area, and I'm going to move the second reading with the idea that hopefully, something can be worked out before the third reading.
And we have a debt, it has to be, we have to have some consensus
Right.
At the next council meeting, because of deadlines for the application being filed, correct? Okay.
Right.
Seven, yes?
All right. That was item 29. It is now 5:07. That takes us to item 37. His hearings are to start at 5, but we had that item under discussion at 5 o'clock. Before we start, it looks like we have some Boy Scouts in the front. Is that true? Somebody want to stand up and tell us what, what pack number or what troop number you guys are?
We're from Troop 36.
From where?
We're from one.
What, what, all right, Troop 26?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, all right. And how many do we have here?
Five.
All right, let's thank all you young folks for coming here and giving us your time, and hopefully, you'll learn a lot this evening and want to get elected to be, sit up here with us. So let's give these young people a hand. All right, let's open the hearings at 5:08 on item 37, on the fourth-year 2013 action plan, environmental review record, finding of no significant impact on the environment and notice of intent to require release of funds. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move.
It's been moved.
Six, yes?
Item 38, on the proposed amendments to the second 2011-year and third 2012-year action plans of the 2010-2014 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD consolidated plan for additional emergency solutions, grant ESG funds. Anyone here to speak on that? These are federal funds. Seeing no one, could we have a motion on that proposed amendment to the second year and third-year action plans?
Go ahead, you got it.
All right, it's been moved. Item 39, these are items regarding the tax increment financing TIF and urban renewal areas in Des Moines. There is A, B, C, and D, and we are going to read these items all separately as they require separate votes. So at any rate, items regarding tax increment financing and urban renewal areas in Des Moines, item A is hearing of the new tax increment financing TIF debt to be payable from TIF revenue starting in fiscal year 2013-14 budget, council communication number 12-577. Is there anyone here to discuss item A?
I'll move 39A.
39A has been moved. Item B is recommendation to city manager regarding TIF needs for the fiscal year 2013 and 14, council communication number 12-588. Anyone here to speak on that item?
I'll move item 39B, but would also request that we get, as a council, an update on the status of all the projects, and are all of those projects in compliance with all of the agreements with the city? We could get that information?
All right, item's been moved. We have speaker.
Nan Stoyan, 1604 24th Street Place. I am just asking the manager to keep us all informed and remember Alice Rodine. Pass those on along, please.
Yes.
Do you want me to move to receive and file? The two photographs and comments from Nan?
Are you just handing these out, or do you want us to file these, Nan?
No, I want to pass along the deck. I was planning to get here before we were even. I want each of them to have that.
Okay, we've got it. I don't think we need
Yeah.
She just wants to have it. Okay, item B, it's been moved. Item C, advance of funds for planning, oversight, and administration of the following. In item two, there was a, item one, which has been removed at the request of the managers, my understanding?
Correct.
Item two is the Metro Center Urban Renewal Project, $300,000. So it's advanced the funding for the Metro Center Urban Renewal Project. Anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none?
I'll move C2, 39C.
Been moved. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Seven, yes?
Item D is the urban renewal reports for the urban renewal plans and areas in the city of Des Moines. Come forward, please.
I'll move 39D.
We've got a speaker.
This is my first meeting, I'm nervous. My name is Margaret Schultz. I live at 1321 33rd Street. It's on a dead-end street right behind Eternity Row. I've lived and bought my house for about, almost 13 years. From the time that I bought that house, it's just gone from a nightmare to wonderful. I don't know how much you guys know about the area, but I had
What's your address, Mark?
1321 33rd Street.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Are you looking to speak on the rezoning on Forest Avenue?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not
Okay, that's not this one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Just jumping on a little bit, no problem.
Stay close, that'll be coming up here shortly. All right.
Good call.
I saw Nan make the comment.
Seven, yes?
Takes us to item 40, which are items regarding the property at 2419 Southeast 14th Street, Strollo Development LLC. This is continued from October 22nd council meeting. A is to amend the 2020 community character plan to revise the future land use designation from low-density residential to commercial auto-oriented small-scale strip development. B is a hearing on the rezoning of the property to remove the VDL vehicle lot overlay and to allow the expansion of the RV sales lot subject to conditions. N C is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Mr. Meyer, I'll ask if you have any comments or on this one?
Meyer's saying that we went back to planning zoning, and I think I referred it back there, and they had some things to overcome, but, and I, it's my understanding they all agree now on what they need to do, so.
So we're okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay?
I'll move 40, A, B, and C.
All right, it's been moved. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this?
This was the setback issue.
Item 40, A, B, and C. Anyone? Seeing no one?
Seven, yes?
Okay, item 41, on a request from Luther Park Health Center, Inc., for a sixth amendment to the Luther Park PUD conceptual plan in the vicinity of 2906 East 16th Street, to allow construction of a one-story addition for 10 memory care residential units to the west side of the Gardens assisted living facility along Hull Avenue, subject to conditions. A is the first consideration of ordinance above. Anyone here to speak to this item, again, at the Luther Park Health Center? Anyone? You speaking?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Shane Divik, Civil Engineering Consultants, representing Luther Care on behalf of this concept plan amendment. Also here this evening is John Bloom with Slingshot Architecture. The summary of our addition would be 10-room addition to the Garden Center, as you can see. This is an existing building right here. We're proposing to add 10 units to it right there. Additionally, we're going to revamp the parking in that area. We do agree to all of staff's recommendations, and if you have any questions for myself or John Bloom, we'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody?
No questions, I got some comments. I think they provide a much-needed service in the area, and I talked to Denny, and I think it's going to be another attractive building, like the others that they put there. I saw a letter, near one lady had opposed it because of the parking over there. I talked to Mr. Brownell, and he says that Denny's talked to the county about getting some lots across the street, at a juvenile home, and will help take care of some of their parking needs over there, so I, I think it's a great, great project.
Thank you.
When it comes time, I'd be glad to move it.
All right, anyone else speak? Anyone in the audience to speak additionally on this? Seeing none?
Yes, I will move number 41, 41A.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Seven, yes?
All right, let's note that the hearings end at 5:18. Takes us back to item 30, which is, again, ordinance's second consideration. This one, number 30, on the rezoning of 3710 Hubble Avenue from C2, general retail and highway-oriented commercial, and R160, one-family low-density residential to PUD planned unit development for the development of 254 residential dwelling units. A is the final consideration of this ordinance above, and waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Anyone to speak on this item? Again, second consideration, asking for a third at 3710 Hubble.
Jim Conlon, 3197th, Suite 500, Des Moines, Iowa. I think we've been through the particulars of this. I'm more than happy to respond to any questions. We, of these 254 units, there'll be 60 senior projects, and then there'll be a number of rent-to-own duplex or single-family dwellings, and be more than happy to respond to any question. We'd like consideration to waive the third reading for a number of reasons, one of which the seller would like to be paid. So we can understand that. Any questions?
Any questions, anybody?
No, I'd make a comment. I really think this is a nice project going over there. Jim has established himself as a good landlord and has people there on premise to oversee them, and that, I think the understanding is, senior housing, you're going to have underneath parking there.
Underground parking.
And that's going to be nice for those people, and I think it, you know, it's, he's cooperated, he's made sure that, he's worked with Dart to put in a
Shelter.
Station where, a shelter for the people who are waiting for the buses and that, so.
Should be a great project.
Is a great project.
Thank you. You gonna move it? Thank you.
If we're ready, I will move 30 and, 30A, which would then waive the third reading for
All right.
For the project.
Item 30 and 30A has been moved. Anyone to speak? Seeing none?
Seven, yes?
Takes us to item 31, on the rezoning of 3201, 3211, 3221 Forest Avenue, and 1414 32nd Street from C1, neighborhood retail commercial, R160, one-family low-density residential, and R3 multifamily residential to limited NPC, neighborhood pedestrian commercial to allow the redevelopment of the property for pedestrian-oriented multifamily residential apartments, subject to conditions. Are there speakers? Well, it looks like Mr. Ludwig.
Mayor of County and members of the council, Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator. Very briefly, the subject property is located at the northwest corner of 32nd Street and Forest Avenue. It's highlighted here in this orange crosshatching. The far western parcel within the request is currently zoned R3, which is multifamily residential. The eastern parcel within the boundary is currently zoned C1, which is a neighborhood commercial zoning designation, and then this single-family lot on the north end of the parcel is currently zoned R160. For some clarification purposes, we did do some analysis of what could be developed on the property at the zoning state as it is today. If the parcels were separate, within the R3-zoned parcel, which is right here, this crosshatch area is where the building could be located. These areas that aren't crosshatched would be building setbacks. This hatched area up here This hatched area up here would be where parking would have to be located. You cannot have parking in a front yard in an R3 district. On the C1 portion of the property, the crosshatching, you could have parking in a front yard in a C1-zone parcel. This crosshatch is basically where development and/or parking could be on the property. In the R3 portion of the property, under just, if it were just developed on its own, there could be eight dwelling units developed on the R3-zone parcel. There could be up to 11 units developed if just on this C1-zone parcel. And then parking can be extended into a residential zoning district with a site plan review by planning commission without any zoning change. If the parcels were developed in entirely, or entirety, under existing zoning, the R3 district would be the most restrictive zoning for the large portion of the property, and so that zoning would carry if it were developed in common. If that were done, a total of 17 units could be developed under existing zoning on that property, and once again, parking could be extended into an R160 zone parcel. What this drawing tries to show is where buildings would be placed if the property were zoned in an NPC, neighborhood pedestrian commercial zoning. Ultimately, the difference is, one, the building can be located at a zero-foot setback from the lot line, from the front lot line, and this is the outline of the building that was proposed as a concept drawing, a part of rezoning by Mr. Nelson and their consultants. This area shown here is the area that they had designated for parking on their plan. Under NPC zoning, there are site plan guidelines which apply to the multifamily development or any commercial development of a property. The residential developments, design guidelines would say that, based on the square footage of lot, approximately 26 units could be developed on the parcel just based on strict guideline. That guideline can be waived and considered, and the commission has, in the past, granted waivers to that design guideline on numerous projects along High Street and along in the Ingersoll area. So, the applicant is, has expressed an intent to develop 48 units on the property. At the time that was recommended or reviewed by the planning commission, they were providing the parking required for 48 dwelling units under the proposed zoning. We had a letter of support from the Drake Neighborhood Association for that zoning. We had a letter of support from the Drake Neighborhood, or I'm sorry, the Drake University, and we did not have 20% opposition from surrounding property owners, and I can show you that map in one second. This, very briefly, is the concept sketch that was submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so, just the crosshatching, 48 units building in this location with the parking wrapped around in that configuration. These were some basic elevations from, of the building that were done. These have not been formally approved by the planning commission. It would be subject to a separate site plan review. Again, another character image, it's basically a three-story building. It would be all residential. This is the site today. This is this, looking at the intersection of 32nd and Forest. That is an existing commercial building right at the corner. The proposed building actually would be set back a little bit further than the existing commercial building. I know that the P&amp;Z hearing, some of neighbors expressed concern about visibility at this intersection, and we believe that that can be addressed through site plan review with the planning commission when that, and if the zoning is approved. This is the existing multifamily building that is nearly to the north of the proposal. It is not within the rezoning area. The parking would surround the back and north side of that development. This was the consent map to date. We do not have 20% opposition, so it requires a simple majority vote. If you choose to waive third reading of the zoning, that would require a six-sevenths vote of the city council. With that, I'm available if you have any questions.
Mike, it seems unusual that there are several property owners that did not respond. Seems like it's a higher percentage.
I can assure that we mailed notice to every property owner that has a name. This is a 250-foot boundary of the proposed rezoning. We also notified the Drake Neighborhood Association of the rezoning, and I can't speak to why people do or don't. Let's get my cards.
Mike, just for the record, do you have a picture of the house that sits on the northeast corner of 33rd and Forest that would be demolished?
Thank you. Any other questions by council? Seeing none, let's open up the hearing. It looks like we have our applicant released representative thereof here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Larry James Jr., 3101 Ingersoll, Des Moines. I represent the applicant, 3201 Forest LLC. With me tonight is Angie Fonkoo. She's one of the, she works with the applicant. As Mr. Ludwig stated, my client is only seeking rezoning at this point. The, my client has decided that, in the interest of determining whether or not this project will qualify for Iowa Finance Authority funding, whether or not actually it will be funded, will determine whether or not the project goes forward. He does not want to go through the expense of civil design and architectural drawings that are required. But as you're aware, and as Mr. Ludwig pointed out, the site plan review process is very intense with NPC. It does require significant neighborhood input. It requires planning zoning approval and staff approval. So my client is fully prepared to work closely with the Neighborhood Association, surrounding neighbors, Drake University, city staff, to make sure that the project is, meets the standards that Neighborhood Association has come to expect. I'm going to go through a couple things here, just to give folks that may not be aware of some of the participants in this project. One of the participants is Mike Nelson. Mr. Nelson is the owner of Nelson Development and Nelson Construction. He's also one of the owners of this particular project that was before you tonight. The Nelson Development has been significantly involved in several high-profile multifamily projects in the city of Des Moines. Number one is Liberty Building, which you are all familiar with, with the Hyatt Place Hotel condominiums and office space. E300 is another project that has been well-received in the city, a very energy-efficient, the home of Zommy Burger. Interior shot of that building. The AP Lofts is another historic reuse south of MLK. Currently, they are involved in the Fleming Building redevelopment, historic project set hopefully to be completed by April or May of 2013. It's coming along beautifully. And finally, the Des Moines Building, which was awarded after a competitive process to Nelson Development and Fauch Brothers. They thankfully closed on closing financing last week and a half, and have begun demolition last week, and that is scheduled for completion in 2014. This project is a mix of market-rate housing and affordable housing using CBPG funds. It's also, has retail and restaurants on the first floor. We're very excited about this project. So, with that as its basis, the type of projects that my client's been involved with, looked at the site that's before you tonight. The site has been owned by my client and by others for several years. Bought it right before the housing crash, real estate crash, has been trying to figure out what, how to redevelop the site into a real urban commercial strip that would benefit the neighborhood. Has been unable to do so, unable to figure out how to make the numbers work on that. Went back, looked at, looked at this possibly from a housing perspective. The first thing that the, my client looked at was the 2011 Drake Neighborhood Plan. It was developed by the city of Des Moines, the Drake Neighborhood Association, and by Drake University. Two-year process, starting in 2009, hundreds of hours went into this plan. This plan is very specific in what it calls for, and specifically to this block. The Drake Neighborhood Plan calls for encouraging new affordable multifamily developments along quarters of University, Forest, and MLK. It calls for, to develop the area between 30th and 33rd as a campus town pedestrian-friendly district, which we believe that this project would help encourage. Says encourage development of additional housing densities, support those area businesses, which this project potentially would. Goes into further discussion about the, how the Drake Neighborhood Association recognizes multifamily properties as important part of the neighborhood. And finally, there is a specific reference to this area between 30th and 33rd on Forest, that the Drake Neighborhood Association can support the rezoning from C1 to NPC on a case-by-case basis. As Mr. Ludwig noted, the Drake Neighborhood Association has stated, and they will reiterate this tonight, that they do support the rezoning. Again, everyone is on the same page, that this is only the first step, that the Drake Neighborhood does not come on board as far as site plan approval. We are not at that point yet. There'll be a second step if council approves rezoning, and if they get the IFA credits to build this project, they will return and work with the Neighborhood Association. So again, this is a conceptual elevation only. I can guarantee you that this will change with neighborhood input. This is something the architect put together on behalf of my client. It is not intended to be what will end up on the site. This is simply for discussion purposes and get the discussion going. Again, this would only take place if IFA funding is granted to this project. The project that's been submitted for low-income housing tax credits is with, based on the input we've received so far from neighbors and from the Drake Neighborhood Association, it will not be 100% affordable. It will be, out of the 48 units, there will be 10 market-rate units, which should be available for anyone. It'll be fully accessible with an elevator, so fully handicap-accessible, I think to visit all three floors, and I believe specifically, there's a certain number of, I mean, at least half of the units are going to be handicap-accessible units themselves with bars and everything. This just shows, again, another conceptual elevation. This will change, obviously, at site plan stage, but I will point out, council, that this shows the sidewalk, if everyone's, anyone's been on Forest, the sidewalk is about three feet wide setback. It's very, much too close. This would show a 12-foot sidewalk, we'd see in Dock Town, you'd see downtown with street trees along there, and an additional eight-foot, between a four-foot planting area, you have an eight-foot sidewalk area adjacent to the building. Again, this is a conceptual plan, which is subject to change, working with the neighbors, that is showing 48 units. This is not showing commercial on the first floor. My client, based on their experience, has not been able to lease space in a commercial area on that first floor, and frankly, based upon input we've had from neighbors, we would be concerned to add commercial for the potential parking and traffic that could create much more traffic-intensive than a residential building. So, with that, again, my client is well-open to continuing discussions with the Neighborhood Association, just seeking rezoning at this point. I will point out, as this has been raised as an issue, the house that's directly to the north of the project, it's surrounded on three sides. My client has been in discussions with this owner, they have been unable to reach a price that they can both agree on for purchasing that. But, so we'll see. They know that could change next year, but at this point, that is not included in the project. With that, I'm available for questions.
Anybody have any questions at this moment? Ellie? Okay, I think there probably is also.
Thank you.
Mike, could you clarify a couple things for us real quickly? In regards to C1, are there commercial uses that could be put on this piece of ground? I mean, what would, what, there's a commercial property there now. If one was to take it down, it looks like that building, quite frankly, is not in a state that anyone's going to want to reuse. Could somebody put a fast food or a gas station in there?
C1 allows, I believe, fuel pumps. I'd have to go double-check, because we do have some corridors where there are limitations on fuel pumps. I think it'd be challenging on this site to have a C store on the property. But I think what this shows is that if that building could not be reused, they would have to comply with the setback requirements of the C1 district, which would be a 30-foot setback for the building. They could have parking within five feet of a property in this.
But, a lot of this is a matter of right, so if they met those requirements, they can just go put something in there?
Yes, yes.
Does NPC give the council and the neighborhood in terms of review and everything? Because if, as a matter of right, if somebody came in with a plan and met those requirements, quite often, that wouldn't even show up here.
That is correct.
Does NPC give us a little more leverage?
Absolutely, it does. NPC District was one of the first districts which triggered a site plan review for any kind of commercial or residential development. Then subsequently, we did adopt multifamily site plan development guidelines, so both of those requirements would apply to development of multifamily on this property. But, yes, absolutely, planning commission review of a site plan is required on this. There is not an administrative review of development on the property that's zoned NPC.
One other question, question was asked to me, is this a new zoning category, NPC? If not, where else is it, and how long has it been in place?
I believe that the NPC District was added to the code around 1998. I arrived at the city in 2001, so it was prior to my arrival. The primary corridor where the NPC District exists is along the Ingersoll corridor, and that runs, the NPC zoning generally runs from about, I want to say, 40th Street down to basically MLK along Ingersoll for properties fronting Ingersoll Avenue. It also extends across MLK to include the northeast corner of MLK and Ingersoll. And then we have some scattered sites throughout the city that have been rezoned to NPC also.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mike. We're going to open it up for other comments, discussion, information, questions at this time. Anybody that would like to step forward, we invite you to do so now. Just so we get an idea, how many speakers, how many folks are going to step up and speak here? So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven? Council, what do you think? How many minutes each? Three, all right, and then in case there's some other time, you might ask for a little more. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll go as fast as I can. My name is Margaret Schultz. I live at 1321 33rd Street. I've owned my house for almost 13 years. The first year that I bought my house, the fraternity and somebody, anyway, there was a murder right down at the end of my block. I live on a dead-end street. It's really, I'm one to two plats, apparently outside this circle. But there was a murder within the first year of this, whatever they call it. As far as I can tell, I drive by that because I have to take Forest to get to my house. I have not seen any attempt to, to rent those properties out. I know a lamp shop used to be there, because I'm an electrician, I, I know that. And, and then there was a plumbing place. I think those places would be fine to rent out. It would be very nice, these little shops for people. The neighborhood when I got there was absolute nightmare. Parties, nobody cared for anything. It was, I was constantly picking up glass from my block all the way down to 40th, and I walked my dog that area. There's many, many small families there, small children. The, in the years that I have been there, people have upgraded their homes, they've made this little nightmare of a neighborhood into a community. Every single one of these people are, are doing wonderful things. The Drake people, they have asked me, did I mind having a sign for the fraternity house that then got put on my block? So I did not receive any notice of this going on. I think under the circumstances of my block being so small and a dead-end street, and it, 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 there's no room for any of that. We barely have room as it is for the Drake people. We have come to get along with each other. Drake has, they send me stuff, I get invited to their things. We've become a community. I, I see this as absolutely going backwards. I don't know how else to put it.
Okay, just, Mike, do you have that map of the area? If you could show us real quickly where, where you're...
In that circle that he's talking about, you've got Jethro's, you've got the Burger King, the...
Which, which one of these?
I would, mine is 1321 33rd, so apparently I'm one to two, come all the way down here, down, I think we're going this way, aren't we? I'm between University and Forest.
So you're at the...
So I think we're down here. There might be some writing right there where my house would be. I'm on the east side of the street, right there, right there. I don't know what that says, but I think that's where my house is. 1321 33rd. And it, when, when the Drake people come, everybody wants to park there. Any event, the, the fraternity house, everybody wants to park there. I just ask that you please reconsider.
Okay, so you're, you're there behind KFC and...
I'm, I'm four properties from the fraternity house, so it's a one, two, three, four. I, I believe I'm that, where that writing is, right there.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Next.
Well, I think the Drake Neighborhood should speak first because I'm mayor of...
Fine, fine. Whoever needs to speak. If everybody kind of get over here so we can kind of keep it moving here, that'd be great. Appreciate it very much.
My name's Jerry Epping. I live at 1333 33rd Street. I am right within the circle there. I would like to ask you guys to table this, zoning. Just for the fact of the matter is, the, the person that, the parties that are asking for the zoning change are so vague on what they're going to do and what they want to do. Commercial property there was pretty vibrant when I lived, when I moved there. I've been there since 2002, 2000, right in there somewhere. We had, we had the trophy shop, we had Goring Plumbing, we had a lamp shop for a while, and then all of a sudden, they all left, and the building started to, you know, look like crap. So I'm just looking to table this because it's too, the plan's too vague for what they want to do there. That's all I'm asking.
All right. Jerry, could you show us which house is yours on that, on that? All right. Hey, thanks, Jerry. Appreciate it.
Jerry, did you receive a survey card? Did you send it back in?
I did not. I did not.
Thank you.
See, the reason I did is because what they were showing was, you know, there was going to be retail space there. I'm thinking, you know, great.
Are you opposed now?
I'm not opposed. I'm opposed to, I'm opposed to a 40, a three-story apartment building there. I'm not opposed to a building with some retail there. You understand what I'm saying? Like, you know, some, some shops with some lofts maybe, you know? That'd be great. That, you know, I think that would fit better for everybody than 48 units, but, you know, with the parking situation. Drive around the area sometime, try to find a place to park on 32nd Street or, you know, anyway.
Thank you, Jerry.
You bet.
I'm Mark Snyder. I own the property at 3121 Forest, which is actually this right here. I guess, and I don't know if I speak for some others, the reason I didn't send the card back was, is because I thought by going to the zoning board for their meeting, to say that I wasn't for it was sufficient enough, but I've now learned that that's not how it's played. You got to send the card back and say that you're not for it, and be colored in red. I don't know if there's other people here that were at the zoning meeting that felt the same thing, that we were kind of showing our disapproval of it or so forth by going to that meeting. Basically, I'll be quite honest with you, I don't know if I'm for or against the zoning right now. We don't know enough about it. I think I speak for some of the other neighbors here, that we kind of feel like, we kind of got blindsided on some of this. You know, we kind of thought that we had a meeting with Larry James and so forth, and I talked to Dolph Poliam from Drake University. Drake for, or Dolph wrote me a letter from Mr. James that said that there's pretty much being tabled till the spring, so the neighbors, we all kind of just thought we had a sigh of relief to kind of figure out what was going on. And then last Tuesday morning, we get up and we open up the paper, and we find that Mr. James was here, trying to get all the warnings waived and so forth. I just flat don't know if it's good or bad, and I just think that we'd like to have some time to find out if it's a good or bad situation for us. It very well could be, you know, a good zoning change. We do have more say-so and so forth, but I think we kind of got thrown this conceptual site plan, and we kind of think they go hand in hand, and I kind of feel that there should be this conceptual site plan that says, we're going to change the zoning, and this is what we're planning on doing when we change the zoning. I guess that's what I got to say for now.
No, no, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Derek Gord, 2422 Drake Park. I am the Drake Neighborhood Association President. I pretty much agree with everything that everybody has said so far here today. Even those for and opposed, we, we do have a mix of opinions in this neighborhood, and part of this is that this is a very complicated zoning change that we have going on. You have R3, you have C1, you have R1, just about every mix, putting that into an NPC-zoned district. Now, our concern from the Neighborhood Association is when we don't have any input to a change or a building. We feel that when we are involved with the site planning, and especially when developers come to us early in the process, we have a very good history of working with developers to come up with the best plan possible for that site. So our fear has always been, and the reason why we put the language into the plan that we did about zoning to an NPC on a case-by-case basis, would be to avoid a situation on a lot like this, where you had one developer that wanted to develop something else, and another developed something completely different, that together made the, made the area worse. And so, we look at something like consolidation like this into an NPC with a single developer as taking an entire block section through a site plan review process and reviewing what we would like to see in a comprehensive fashion on that block. And so that is why we support the NPC zoning changes before the council today. However, I do have to say that we do have some reservations about the size of 48 unit, the impact that that would have on traffic. We have some questions about what traffic would find on that size of a unit with that many cars added to that particular area that already has noted traffic problems, especially during times when the university is busy, relays, so forth. We also have some concerns about how, what we've seen on some of the conceptual drawings, and those concerns are, have been expressed here, and I think everybody is concerned about the pace of it. I think our idea is that we would like to see an NPC zoned, and we'd like to work over a period of time, we've talked about getting a group together and working over a period of time, with areas like traffic and transportation, with areas like the, the developer, and finding out what's the right mix. There were considerations in the planning and zoning about the trees, about preserving, preserving what they could of those lots, about destroying an old historic, well, an older house, and what does that mean? So there are a lot of these that we, that we'd consider, but we feel that the best way to do that is to work with an NPC zoning site plan review. And that's why we're for the zoning change, but we hold no opinion on the project as a whole.
All right. Appreciate it.
Christina Johnson, Vice President, Drake Neighborhood Association, 3523 University, Apartment 12A. I'm here to reiterate a little bit what Derek said, but, and much more concise, and that is that we, as the Neighborhood Association, voted on our, voted at our meeting just last Wednesday, that we are in approval for the NPC zoning change, and we really do not have a position on what will be put at that site, just for some of the reasons that Derek stated, because there just isn't enough information on hand at the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mary and I canvassed the area last night, didn't find many people. Nan's still in 1604 24th Place. The lady who lives on the corner, that would be the wet, just west of this on Forest, it's a building that was burned down and, burned down and then was rebuilt there, and her property, she was in tears last night. She said, you know, her property was worth $250,000, and I don't know whether that is true or not, but she thought so, certainly. And she was beside herself because of, of this. Now, she was convinced that she would be losing $100,000 worth of property value there. She isn't here tonight, and I, you know, I, I expected her, but she wasn't sure when I left her where City Hall was. First, I'd like to see, say that the NPC zoning has no business whatsoever in this place. And Mr. Nelson has been waiting now, refusing people who wanted to rent the building before the windows start getting broken up and they were, then it was boarded up. He has now, for six years or so, been holding off on opportunities to rent that building. Now, he may be an Aiden Moran kind of developer, but that's not what that, this property that he has acquired requires. Concerning the fallacy that has been following through this whole thing, and makes P and Z now, as it is composed, a question mark. The fallacy of the part for the whole. Drake's for this. The letter was enthusiastically sent somehow because someone asked him to, by Dolph Poliam. Dolph Poliam has since retired.
He's still there.
He's still there, but he is retired, and, I don't know how much time he bargained for. But, the other factor is that the Drake Neighborhood Association is a very small group of people. I've talked to Derek at length. He is very enthusiastic about this NPC plan, and he, and Christina too, made it clear, they are for that plan, but they don't know the territory. And mistaking the part for the whole. When the organization couldn't find its bylaws the other night, they didn't know how many members they had, four of us went and joined, and the questions, one, one person who is not choosing to speak, but is, has been trying for a long time to just find out whether she was still a member, find out how many members there were. We have something that must be tabled here, because given what this thing would do, not only to the Drake area right around here, this circle should have been way out beyond the edges of this page. It will, it will change traffic on Forest. Of course, Jethro's owner, Bruce Girlman, wants it. It will put more people in his oversized, and how did it get permitted in there, I don't know, but I wasn't paying attention. This, this is, this is one of the most boondoggle things I have ever seen in my long career. And I guess that's all I can say now, but I think if it isn't tabled, you are making a few of us work for another week like crazy to get this place filled, because even the ones here, who were opposed, are willing to see something developed, because Mr. Nelson has been very, very long in developing this huge project that does not fit in that area.
Okay, the project, Nan, is not in front of us today. It's the zoning, and there are certain things they can do as a matter of right, and I think that some of the neighbors are concerned about that. And certainly, the, the condition of the properties there, at least by eyesight, doesn't look like it's in really great condition, nor their position up on the street, does it look like, is very neighborhood nor pedestrian friendly. Now, that being said, I think everybody here wants to see what's going to, the final product's going to look like, and I think all of us would like to have some control over, over that, and discussions with the owner and everybody else to make that happen. I'm, I'm not sure C1 is what the neighborhood would really like to see happen either. I, I think that, that, at this point in time, is, is an additional problem. So I appreciate everything that you've said here, but I think that I, personally, well, I don't want to have a debate, question at least some of the reasoning. But at any rate, is there anybody else to speak here?
Mayor and members of the council, my name is Mary Brubaker. I live at 612 44th Street, where I am a founder of and an officer of our Neighborhood Association. I served on the Drake Neighborhood Association Board in the past, and I have owned two homes in the, in the, in the boundaries of the area we're talking about, and I've lived in two others there. From my birth until '21, I lived a half a block from the property we are discussing tonight, and this is the house that was, this is the way my neighborhood looked when I lived there and attended Drake University. Along the way, I have learned how important it is for all residents of the city to be active in their neighborhood associations, if they know they have one, or if they are contacted to join. It's the only way they can be decision-makers about their area, and to protect their investments in property, and have a pleasant place to live. That was a very pleasant place to live. It will soon be bulldozed if this goes through. And a place to raise their families. When an issue like this before you tonight is so layered with complex questions and assumptions, and fears, and anger, and lack of information... assumptions, and fears, and anger, and lack of information to the impacted neighbors, and with even possible environmental and density concerns, a rush to get city council approval seems very inappropriate, or some might say just plain wrong. We need more light and air and a revelation on this. We have what often contaminates this public process, which is secrecy. Unwillingness to get the facts, to be interested homeowners, rushing to make important decisions that will change a lot of lives and property values. We've already heard tonight how those little cards that go out to, what, 250 feet away from the property in question must be confusing, or they're lost, or they're not paid attention to, because people don't understand what it means. You've heard two people say they would have said no. Most neighbors I've talked with learned about this change, as Mark indicated, of the zoning by reading a short item in the November 6 Register after the first hearing on this topic, when an audience member, you just heard from her, was shocked to learn of it and protested. It wasn't even the reason she had come to the city council meeting. This just isn't the way to run a railroad, as the old saying goes, it just ain't the way to run a railroad. Or I might add, important city council decisions. We need to take a deep breath, step back, and follow another old proverb, which is count to 10. Count to 10 and ignore the little bell. What is the rush here? Usually, a rush means a problem for someone, and here it is the problem for the neighbors. Major changes need careful consideration. You can't put a bad or questionable development back in the box. What is the future? Will the neighbors, if this zoning changes and the apartment goes up, wake up each day to look out their windows at a parking lot with garbage and recycling bins, trucks and cars, and the view of the backside of an apartment building obstructing their views? It all begins with this decision here tonight, the change of zoning. That is why I suggest a return to the drawing board, where we turn a bright light on it to see the flaws and the problems. Let's not leave the citizens most affected by this in the dark, or facing a future that they really don't want or deserve to live in. Thank you.
This must be tabled for Thursday evening.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else to speak?
Mr. and Ms. Councilmembers, I am Angie Punku with 3201 Forest LLC. I represent the developer, work on the development team. I just want to reiterate, we are here for rezoning only. We're not here for any site plan approval, obviously, or anything like that. This would just be to go to NPC use, and with that, we would work with the Neighborhood Association, with P&amp;Z, with you guys, if you wanted, to make sure we meet multifamily standards and NPC standards. So the conceptual drawings we showed was just to kind of get us off the ground, so you guys had an idea of what we were looking at doing. But the first step in all this is just getting the rezoning to NPC. We have attempted to rent this out before. We've actually had purchase agreements on this property as well, but with that C1 use, it was something that the neighborhood wanted even less, and that planning was not okay with either. So that's when we decided to go try to change it to NPC and work with the Drake Neighborhood to get their approval. So thank you for considering this, and just wanted to reiterate, it's for zoning only.
Angie, could you answer a couple of questions?
Yeah.
It's my understanding, not my understanding, we're going through this process right now because you're submitting an IFA.
Correct.
Application, which is due December.
December 10.
10, okay. So let's just fast forward. The notice comes out in March.
Correct.
That maybe you didn't get the award of the tax credits.
Right.
Can you talk about how you would move forward if we do final approval on the NPC? Discuss it both from receiving the credits and not receiving the credits.
Okay.
Because nothing's going to happen between, if we go ahead with the NPC right now, nothing will happen, one way or the other, until a final decision is made by IFA in March.
That's correct. We will probably work with the Neighborhood Association with planning and zoning during that time, so that we would be ready to come to a P&amp;Z meeting as soon as we get the award, assuming we do get the award. So we would have their input probably starting in February, but we would not come before anybody until we got the award with IFA. If we do get the award with IFA, we would hope to be on the agenda the end of March, and then by then, we would have had the neighborhood meetings and worked with P&amp;Z to make sure that we meet the multifamily and the NPC requirements, and that we've come up with a design that everybody can agree with. If we do not get IFA financing, we have a couple options, one of which being, see if there's any way we can do a market rate project only, which, as you guys know, is pretty hard to do right now. The other option would possibly wait till the following year for IFA. So the other option, which I think protects everybody a little bit better when it is NPC zoning, we could possibly sell, but they would be required to live with NPC zoning and then go through their own site plan approval.
And if I remember correctly from the presentation this morning, just to put this in perspective as to what we're talking about, I believe that there's a cap on the number of units in the city. Is that correct? And wasn't it 144? And of all the applications that were submitted that are going in, that we're dealing with right now, it's a total of 700.
Yeah, you guys have 14 or 15.
So.
Can you say what this one is going for, because it was in the paper? This project is going for 6.5?
Sir.
That's the cost of the project.
No, that's the cost of the project.
Yeah, that's the cost of the project.
Around $6 million for the cost of the project. We're not going.
Okay, so we're talking about zoning here tonight. The project would come before the council, before the neighborhood, before planning and zoning to look at the details of it.
Correct.
I think the issue before the council this evening is, as you pointed out, is zoning alone.
Rightly.
And the question, I think, before us is whether or not it's a good idea to have NPC versus.
Leaving.
C1 and some other little pieces.
R160, yeah.
Including R3, I think.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep, R160, R3, and C1.
Yep.
So, thank you.
This is the lady I met.
Okay, Nan. You've had your moment to speak. We'd rather not have you calling out from the audience, please. Yeah, go ahead.
Give your name and address. Laura Capaldo, 1433rd.
Thanks, Laurie.
I live in the big new house, or that area in there anyway, on the corner of 33rd and Forest. And so I'm going to be looking out at this complex, and that's going to be all I'm going to look at. My house right now is valued at $310,000. I don't think it's going to be $310,000 when I've got 46 units of low-income housing across the street from me. And I'm still paying the taxes for that amount, but I don't think, I think our way of life, I think a lot of things are really going to change, and the people, I mean, to me, it's going to really just clobber me to death. And, you know, it's, you put in a nice house, hoping that, you know, I'm not saying this wouldn't be a nice building, but you put in a nice house and people start painting their houses and start cleaning things up and that kind of thing in a neighborhood. But to go in and build a house, and then all of a sudden say, gee, you know, before it was supposed to be just this little tiny coffee shops and nice little, you know, eateries and that along the way, great, that would be a plus, that would be a wonderful thing for the Drake students. But then you go and you're going to put in 38, 46, whatever apartments, and the traffic, and the, I mean, I mean, kids riding bikes, kids walking, I mean, all the things that we do now in that area is all going to be changed, you know, forever changed. And I mean, I just want to know, have you checked to see, I mean, the traffic? Because we have a lot of traffic on Forest already. And I mean, it's, you know, they come around that corner from, you know, Beaver, and I mean, they're moving. And then you're going to add in all these apartments with kids, I'm sure, they're not going to be kidless, and I guess I'm just saying, the quality of life that I expected to have there, yes, I built in an area that was, well, my house burnt down, that's why I built back with it, but that was zoned housing and commercial. But I thought it was going to be small commercial. And that's what I was explained it was when I bought the house, that it was small shops or something small. I didn't really want a big, quick trip across the street either. But I guess I'm just saying, I feel I have a lot to lose, probably more so than anybody, just to have that there. And I guess I'm saying, I think, if you want to buy my house, you can.
Yeah.
But I, you know.
Which house is yours up there?
Yeah, can you show us?
Can you point to it on this map right here? At the bottom is university, then going up.
Yeah, Capaldo, right here.
Okay.
Yeah, the big, that corner line.
Okay.
So, and, you know.
That's a question.
Huh?
Laurie, I think probably spending a little bit of time with Mike Ludwig would be helpful because the property across the street from you is zoned R3 and C1. And so.
And what does that, explain that to me a little bit better.
R3 is multifamily, and C1 is, your guess is good as mine, could be anything like a quick trip.
Yeah.
Or a gas station, or a myriad of other things. And I.
See, I just thought, you know, even single family or, you know, multifamily, I guess I just didn't think it was going to be.
No, I understand.
A huge complex.
And I think, I think that what we're trying to get our arms around here is, how do we best control with everybody's input the future of this whole corridor, including your house? And, you know, better to leave it as it is, or better to zone it, something that is going to have to go before the neighborhood, go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, come back before here? This is just a zoning piece, and I think based upon what we said, I don't know what Hallie's going to say, it's his word, but he may suggest that.
I guess I think there needs to be a lot more communication, or that we need to have more time to actually, like, I called down and talked to someone a couple times, and they said, well, you know, we don't really know much about it yet, and.
Well, this only is zoning, so you don't know.
Huh?
We haven't seen drawings.
Right, right. But then, you know, I talked to the person that.
I mean, seen concepts.
Right, the person who was supposed to be, they said, well, call this guy, he's doing all the apartments and that, and he said, oh, no, it's not going to be very big at all, no, won't bother you at all, this, that, and the other. And then I find out it's, you know, going to be quite large. And so I guess I kind of, I just don't want it to be where there become such ill feelings before they ever move in, that, you know.
I don't think developers, based upon what I've heard here tonight, is looking for ill feelings. I think they're looking for input.
Right. Well, and I mean, I don't want them to have ill feelings either. You know, I guess I'm just saying, I think we all need to have some input.
Sure.
And, you know, I just don't want to lose my shirt.
No, I appreciate.
If I may, while you're still up there for just a moment, I just want to make sure you understand that as it's zoned currently, if the council does nothing tonight, that there could be an apartment complex, there could be a gas station, there could be a Burger King right there. Do you understand that?
Okay, I thought that's what we're going for, was an apartment complex. Is that not what we're going for right now anyway?
No, no.
No, that's.
That's their concept, but that's got to go through a whole separate process for a development. I'm sorry to.
But all of those things could happen, if the council said no tonight, all of those things could happen. I don't know what the indignant look is for, Nan. That's absolutely true, based on the zoning.
Someone sat on something for six years and does nothing with it.
Okay, we're not looking for a.
Okay, well.
And I don't mean to argue with that.
I have no problem with something going in there. I really don't, you know? And like I said, I don't want a quick trip across the street and all that traffic.
Nor do I.
You know, ah, leave that down the way. But, you know, in the same sense, I guess I'm a little nervous about something so large going in that it completely takes our way of life away too. You know, and makes it so your kids can't run down the driveway in their big wheels and, you know, or they can't ride up and down the sidewalks and those kind of things. And so, you know, I guess I just would like to see, I mean, I guess it'd be nice to have a win-win for both sides.
Understood.
I understand that, you know, things have to change. I mean, people, you know, life has to change, and what's on that corner right now is ugly. You know, I love the Brown House. I have to say, I know, everybody hates it, I like it, it's a beautiful home, if they just fix it, beautiful on side if they fix it, but they haven't. And, you know, and over the years of people renting it, it's gotten pretty rundown, and after the last group of partyers, I am ready to tear it down. You know, so in that regard, yes, you know, I know there's got to be change, and there's going to be change. I guess I'm just concerned about how big maybe the change is, and that everybody's taken into consideration on that change.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Laurie. All right, let's close the hearing. Hallie, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yep, and I just wanted to make that point clear, because I think we're, a lot of the time we spent tonight was debating the merits of whether the concept plan is a good idea, whether we want a three-story, 48-unit apartment complex in this location. And that's not what's before us, that's not what we're discussing tonight, and quite frankly, whether we vote yes or no tonight is by no means an endorsement of that. I've got some serious reservations. I spoke with a couple of you on the phone in the last couple of weeks, and I completely understand your concerns about parking, about traffic, about a three-story building that doesn't necessarily fit the neighborhood in terms of height. There's a number of issues, but none of those are before us. They haven't put forth a site plan at this point. And one of the benefits, as the mayor has alluded to a number of times, of NPC zoning is that it does come back to the city for review when they do put forward a plan. So we.
So we can go through this all again?
Nan, yes, that, this is the process that we go through. This is the process we go through in terms of creating neighborhood plans, and I was actually surprised to read the Drake Neighborhood Plan, and it wasn't a general, we want more NPC in our neighborhood, we want more multi-density family housing, any number of things. It was specifically tailored to this portion of Forest Avenue between 30th and 33rd, and that's the process that we've gone through over a number of years. I think we would all agree that we don't like what it currently looks like. We would all agree that as it's currently zoned, it could be a number of different things that wouldn't be appropriate for the neighborhood. And I don't say that out of fear that there's a quick trip that's going to move in next week. I say that knowing that it's been a rundown building for a number of years with no tenants that have gone in, whether that's the owner's choice. I'm not aware of any tenants that he refused to locate as was claimed, but nonetheless, he's the property owner, even if that's the case. But we would all agree that the building doesn't look the way that we would like that corridor to look. Quite frankly, I would love to see that area become what happened on the southeast side of Drake in Dogtown, where you've got wonderful development that's occurred over the last several years, even as I was a student at Drake. And I think if we can approve the NPC zoning tonight, I think we've got the potential to really make a big headway into what happens in terms of development in this corridor.
Then you have to restate the whole.
I will move the second reading tonight. I will hold off on waiving the third reading. I do sense that there's still questions out there, and I would direct them to Mike, maybe after we vote, so that they can at least get his contact information and direct any questions to him, or they feel free to contact me as well if you have questions. But I will move to waive the second reading this evening.
Hallie, I support your motion. I know the area pretty well, I don't live far from there. Can you put the picture back up? On a lot of these developments, the neighbors and the people that live close share. share an undue portion of the burden that new development creates. And you always feel bad for that. And so, you know, any of these residents that came up, but, but if you look at that, were basically a block from the largest private university in Iowa, one of the largest universities. Were across the street from, you know, a bar and a fast food place. It creates a, a design that buffers into the residential neighborhood, what is now commercial. It's not like we're changing from single-family housing to an apartment complex or a housing, if that's what it turns out to be. But we're going from a commercial design. Heck, for most of the last 30 years, it was a bar that was on the corner of that that was one of the more wild places in town. And, well, Skip laughs.
Never went in.
I'm sure you didn't. It was, when I turned 19, that was the drinking age, it was a place called Graffiti's, there at the corner. It just seems to me that if we have a hard time approving new development that, that is multifamily in this location, it would be really hard to justify it about anywhere. I mean, I think the setup here, add to it the last comment Hallie made, which is, the neighborhood plan over the last couple of years has called for almost this exact thing in a very, very specific way. It just, it just makes me think that even though the neighbors are uncomfortable now, this is a really good project for the city. And I think because the developer is a solid guy and represented by people that love that neighborhood, we'll end up with a project that they can live with and their worst fears won't come true, it'll be a good project. So, I'm very supportive. I, I probably would have moved the third reading, but I, I support your motion.
If I could make one other comment, a couple of people suggested that I should drive by the area and look at the area. I live literally three blocks from, from this location. I drive past this multiple times a day. My house is actually on this map that's on the screen. So it's not as if I'm wholly removed from this discussion. It's not as if the traffic patterns in this area won't impact me personally. So I just wanted to put that on the record as well.
Hallie, and I'm supportive of your motion. I guess just a, one comment that I would like to make. There have been a number of items discussed tonight. And the one thing that I believe is important is that we have accurate, correct information. And I've heard some misstatements made tonight. And I think it's just really important that maybe from a city perspective, if we could just do some bullet points or something to, to get that information out. Because I think that, I know there's a lot of emotion with this, but I believe everybody's really working hard to try and answer the questions. And if we can make sure that we're all on the same page and have accurate information, I, I think that would help with a lot of the discussion that's going on.
No, that's not the motion.
That's not the motion.
That's not the motion.
Okay, the motion is to, for the second reading, pass Hallie. And then two weeks from now, we'll have a third. Correct? All right, that takes us to ordinance's first consideration. Item 32 is amending Chapter 3 and 102 of the municipal code regarding issuance, renewal, and revocation of leases, licenses, and permits for encroachments onto public rights-of-way and other city property and the removal of encroachments existing without proper authority. Council's communication number 12-583A is the final consideration of the ordinance above and the waivers requested by the city traffic engineer and requires six votes. Anyone to speak on this item? Amending Chapters 3 and 102 of municipal code. Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Seeing none, I will move this item, 32 and 32A.
Seven yes.
Item 33, amending various chapters of municipal code regarding references to the Des Moines Airport Authority. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waivers requested by the legal department requires six votes. Again, amending various chapters of municipal code regarding the references to the Des Moines Airport Authority.
I'll move item 33, 33A.
Anyone to speak? Item's been moved. Mr. Coleman.
Seven yes.
Item 35, council request from Member Hallie Grease to speak regarding stop signs at the intersection of 50th and Meredith Drive. Mr. Grease.
I think there might be a couple individuals in the audience to speak.
Mayor, council members, I'm William Schonberger, live at 5131 Merced Street, 50310. I'm the president of the Meredith Neighborhood Association that this intersection is adjacent to or part of. Very short version of this is that this has been a priority item for the neighborhood for several years to have a four-way stop at the corner of 50th and Meredith. When the Beaver-Meredith intersection was rebuilt a few years back, they put the stops, four-way stops in as a, during, during the construction because of the increased traffic that resulted. Then they took the signs out, even though we asked that they be kept. We've asked for studies. There was a study several years ago, Mr. Fox conducted. At that time, they concluded that according to the criteria they have, they couldn't put the signs back. The construction on Beaver Avenue necessitated putting the stop signs back in again. And they're there now, but due to be removed as the construction on Beaver Avenue is finished or just about finished. We're asking that it remains. I understand the normal process of going through this.
Bill, I've got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
The item on the deal is 50th and Meredith.
Correct. I'm, I'm sorry, if I see Beaver, but it's because of the Beaver construction, they put the stop signs in at 50th and Meredith. But it's a four-way stop at 50th Meredith. Normally, there's only a two-way stop.
Okay.
On 50th Street. And we're asking that the four-way stop remain at that intersection now that Beaver Avenue construction is finished. We understand that normally there's a traffic study, but we also pointed out that 50th Street from Urbendale North, stop signs have been put in at Urbendale and 50th, stoplights at Douglas and 50th, four-way stops at Aurora and 50th. This is all within the last five years, I believe. But we're asking that, to us, it's a safety issue. Again, we understand the need for the study, but at this time, since the signs are already there, we'd like to have them kept in place.
All right, why don't we have our traffic engineer quickly address your concern?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the council, Jennifer Bohack, City Traffic Engineer. I actually have been working with the residents in this area about this stop sign. As the gentleman mentioned, the stop sign was originally put in as part of temporary traffic control due to the way traffic was going to have to reroute through the neighborhood with Beaver being closed. Now that Beaver is open, the original approach was to go ahead and remove this temporary traffic control since it was there just for construction. Because we do have continuing requests to consider this stop sign, four-way stop to remain permanent, we will go ahead and do another engineering study. There was an engineering study done back in 2007. The location did not meet any warrants to keep the, the four-way stop in place, so that's why the signs were removed. We would like to recommend that the study wait to be done until spring. We'll be putting in a new traffic signal at Beaver and Aurora that was approved by you just a couple of weeks ago. And we feel that traffic patterns will change a lot in the neighborhood, both with Beaver now being widened and that new signal going in. We'd like to wait to do the study until traffic has normalized in the area.
So you'll leave the signs in place until, if you bring that study back to us?
We could leave the signs in place until we bring the study back on a temporary basis, yes.
That'd be good, Bill. All right.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name's Terry Golightly. I reside at 4865 Meredith Drive. I'm within a block and a half of the area in question. I purchased that property in July of 2003 and built a new home there, and I have resided there since May of 2004. I will tell you that the reason I'm here today is, number one, if I can inject a little humor, in an area of tight budgets, I do not feel there is a need for a traffic study. The stop signs have proved themselves with the last period that they have been in, reducing the speeds on Beaver, reducing the number of accidents on, or, excuse me, not Beaver, Meredith, and reducing the number of accidents on Meredith. To give you a little background, after purchasing the property, in 2004, I first visited with the Meredith Neighborhood Association about the excessive speeds, the drag racing, heavy truck traffic on this embargoed road, the passing on double yellow lanes in this area. I have dealt with this issue since that point forward, at one point serving as the Vice President of the Meredith Neighborhood Association from 2005 to 2007. I personally walked the neighborhood and did a survey of the residents in the area to the north and the south of this particular area, and as far to the east and west as I could go, asking what their opinions were about stop signs there. I received over 400 signatures at that point in 2005 in favor of that, which was supplied to Mr. Vlasic at that point. We were told by Mr. Fox that if the stop sign was put in, it would open the city to liabilities if someone was rear-ended at the stop signs. At that time, I questioned him as to the city's liability if someone was broadsided at 50th, trying to turn onto Meredith, either from the north or south. As there is a high amount of traffic in that area, since it's zoned and we are in Johnston School District, there is a lot of the residential family units that are transporting children to and from the Johnston School District. And the majority of them come up through for that block from Beaver to the area that's encompassed and behind the multifamily townhomes on Meredith in that 50th Street area. The wait times, I timed it myself, were in excess of five minutes, and I'm not talking at a major rush hour time, I'm talking in the middle of the day to turn out onto that stretch of Meredith. And that, at that point, I was trying to come from the north. I've seen numerous accidents from my window during the daytime at the 50th and Meredith location, people trying to turn out, getting hit or getting thrown in the ditch. This was all before those stop signs were in place. I personally, unfortunately, was victim of a rear-end accident in front of my property two years ago on November 17th. The gentleman was traveling in excess, according to Polk County, of 40 mile an hour when he rear-ended us with no brakes being applied whatsoever. Within that same period of time, within the four to six weeks before or after that point, there was actually three rear-end accidents on the stretch within a half a block of my house. One included a three-car accident for folks trying to pull in to the multi-unit townhomes that the City of Des Moines originally constructed in 1970 as low-rent housing units. Those units are now all filled. To the west of 50th and Meredith, we have townhome units within a half a block. And on down the road closer to Merle Hay, we have multi-unit townhomes in that area also. Besides the fact, we have two major churches on that stretch of road. We have the Catholic Church at Beaver and Meredith, and we also have the Reformed Methodist Church just a half a block west of that. On Sundays, Wednesdays, et cetera, there is a large volume of traffic. The Methodist Church had for years employed an off-duty Polk County police officer on Sunday mornings to just get their people across the street from the parking lot. This stop sign is needed for traffic control, for speed reduction, because it is hard for City of Des Moines or Polk County to radar in that area because we have no shoulder, no sidewalk, or anything else. We have a large amount of pedestrian traffic and bike traffic. I'd like to commend the council on the beautiful job on the Beaver Avenue corridor. The nice wide sidewalks are wonderful, it's encouraging more activity outside for people who want to join into the trails to the north. However, for those living to the west, they're traveling Meredith, and they're traveling along the side of the road, not the shoulder because there basically is none. It's not very well-lit in this area, and I guess I'm glad to hear from Jennifer that they're planning on leaving those stop signs until the traffic study. But I disagree with her, being the homeowner who has lived there, that this is going to reduce our traffic in any way, shape, or form on Meredith. Meredith is a cut-through to Beaver and from the north, from people coming in from Ankeny and/or Johnston and going to the west. It always has been and it will continue to be. And I'm asking the council to save the taxpayers' dollars, and since it's there, leave it stay and let us be able to go. There's a good traffic flow, traffic does not back up in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you. I, I support leaving the signs up, and I'm with some of the people that have spoke about not even doing the study. Seems to me, and I'm not an engineer, but the study should kind of predict how human behavior will actually happen. Well, we've had a year of watching human behavior, and it's worked pretty well. And, and so at least in the interim and with scarce resources, I'm not quite sure it's worth it. I was always an advocate of the sign, the, the four-way stop, because from Merle Hay to Beaver, there's no other stop on that. And it is a windy, hilly stretch of road where a lot of speeding happens. And I think the four-way stop is a good traffic management system regardless of its impact going north and south. So, I'm with you, Hallie.
I agree with Councilman Coleman, and I'm glad that we're able to keep the, the signs up. I would actually agree with Councilman Coleman. And I guess my motion would be to maintain the signs on an interim basis and then refer back whether or not we do any studying to the city manager for review. I, I think traffic patterns may or may not change with the Beaver Avenue widening. But I guess I would almost have the inverse of, of what Jennifer suggested in that we keep the stop signs unless, in the next six to eight months, we find that they're an issue for, for traffic flow, or something along those lines.
Mr. Mayor, council members, obviously we will follow your direction. The testimony was quite compelling. Right now, I think the idea of leaving the stop signs there is, seems perfectly appropriate if that's what you direct. I will tell you that allowing the study to be done is really important. And the reason it's important is that as a city, we get a lot of these requests, and we're constantly challenged to try to figure out some rational way to decide when to put the stop signs in and when not. This may be very clear-cut in this instance, but not all of them are that way. And maintaining some systematic way to allow those decisions to be made, I think is appropriate. Your notion that the signs are there until we come back to you with some other.
until we come back to you with some other ideas about it is fine with me. But I do think the process of going through the study to make sure that the warrants are consistently applied to this location as well as others makes sense to me.
Mr. Mayor.
There may be a legal issue here as well. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The study is imperative, not just because it's the smart thing to do, but from a legal standpoint, the Uniform Manual that governs traffic control devices in Iowa requires a warranted study. You have to have a study to show that the traffic warrants placing whatever signs are there. In response to the comment about liability, that is, in fact, the case. The city doesn't have a duty to place traffic control devices in the first instance generally, but when they are placed, they have to be placed in a non-negligent manner. And one of the ways that you can demonstrate the need and the appropriateness of the sign is by going through the study. So, I would agree with the city manager and would encourage council to let the study go.
Can I ask you this question, Mr. Attorney? These signs are already there.
There is a provision that allows a city engineer to place the signs temporarily without a warranted study, but on a temporary basis. And that, I believe, is what Jennifer's talking about.
Is that what happened here?
Yeah, to place it on a permanent basis would require the warrant study.
These darn laws.
Well, at least we're not just wasting the time in the engineering department. We can spend the attorney and manager's time as well.
I'm glad to know that every sign that Tom Vlasic has ever put up that we had a study on.
We obviously did it.
He was not the attorney when Vlasic was here.
My motion would be the same, unless there's further comment.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one brief comment?
Why don't you come up after? We're voting, but you can come up.
You won already.
Voting seven oh, go ahead.
In living there during the period of the Beaver and Meredith corner reconstruction there, I was there when the stop signs were in the first time, and I was there when they came out. And I can tell you, and I appreciate we need the study, and thank you very much for leaving them, but I will tell you, when they come out, we have more accidents and more problems and more speed than we had before. So, I am hoping that we can come to a good resolution, because I sure don't want to see a fatality of any kind, way, shape, or form, or anybody else having the accident like we had that night. So, thank you.
Thanks, Teri. All right, that moves us to item 36. By the way, that was a 7-0 to do it. Thanks for coming down, Bill. Communication report from Danielle Housley and Matt Soden of 4207 Enden Lane to speak regarding a dog incident.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Matthew Soden. I actually live at 3228 East 30, or East 26th Street. And this is my sister-in-law, Dani Housley. I thank you for your time, and first would like to start with Dani giving personal experience that happened, that occurred on October 8th.
Hello. On October 8th, my neighbor's American Bulldog came over and started attacking my house and attempting to get into my house, and started mauling on my dog and ended up killing him in our own backyard. And the mauling lasted about at least five minutes, and I couldn't do anything about it. The dog then got sent to the ARL and was there for only 10 days and then got released. And then the dog has been in the neighborhood since, and I have just felt very scared in the neighborhood. I can't even go to my car from my house without being feeling threatened. And my, all my neighbors feel the same way.
Okay, we have started a petition to asking the city council to amend Municipal Code of the City of Des Moines, Article 18, Section 18, Tac 196, the definitions of a dangerous animal. Currently, a dangerous animal is defined, dangerous animal means any animal, including a dog, except for an illegal animal per se. As listed in the definition of illegal animal, that has bitten or clawed a person while running at large and attacked was unprovoked, or any animal that has exhibited vicious propensity in present or past conduct, including such that the animal, one, has bitten or clawed a person on two separate occasions within a 12-month period; two, dead-bite or claw once, causing injuries above the shoulders of a person; three, could not be controlled or restrained by the owner at the time of the attack to prevent the occurrence; or four, has attacked any domestic animal or fell on three separate occasions within a 12-month period. We have started a petition. At the beginning of this meeting, we had 203 signatures, and I was presented with four more sheets of signatures. So, I don't have an official count, but I'm told that it's somewhere around 275. We would like to see this amended to add into the definition of a dangerous animal, a domestic animal that attacks unprovoked, causing death of another domestic animal. Because in this situation, this American Bulldog would have to attack. I do believe that it is currently now a vicious animal. So, it has been licensed and insured. And did they build a fence? I believe that they had to build a fence, and they have started to comply with those things. The only problem is, is this dog has, they already had a fence there prior, and it had been jumping fence and found ways out. And that's how it was able to terrorize the neighborhood.
They're still getting out, too.
And there are other dogs at the house, other American Bulldogs, and four others. But this isn't necessarily just regarding that animal. We understand that no matter what the council does.
What's the address of the house? Just for the record.
4207 Enden Lane.
That's where she lives.
The dogs live at 600 Wine Gardner.
Which is catty corner to them.
Our backyard is their backyard.
It's South of University over in Bailey High Manor.
Just before you get in, please.
Over in where?
Over in Bailey High Manor.
Yep. And so, we understand that this would not affect what happened with this dog in this incident, but this is more of a prevention, because I believe that, as it states, "Any animal that has exhibited vicious propensity in the present or past conduct." And then it gives a list of specifics. This dog was not deemed dangerous after mauling and killing a dog crushing its skull. And I mean, it was a horrific scene.
So, just again, for the record, we don't hear this kind of stuff anymore. But your statement is the dog came into your yard?
Yes, in our backyard.
And was your backyard fenced also?
We were coming in from the fenced area. Half my yard is fenced. And then we were coming from the fenced area to my back door. And that's when the dog came over, when we were going from the fenced area, so.
What kind of dog was yours?
It's a toy poodle, about five pounds.
All right.
And the other dog's been declared vicious?
I do believe so, because I know.
I think it's vicious by breed. Now, the question is whether it's dangerous.
Yes, and that's why we're here, is because I don't believe that designating this dog vicious, a dog of this type, I'm not saying that all American Bulldogs, but an animal that attacks and kills another animal in a brutal attack, I mean, what's the next step? There's a daycare that is directly next to her house, and there are children playing in the neighborhood. A dog that kills another animal, I think is.
So, your request really here is to ask whether or not it's possible to have an ordinance change of some sort?
Yes, sir.
And you've got a petition?
Yes, yes, sir, we do.
Mayor, if it's okay, I'll move to receive and file a petition. And the motion would be to refer it to Legal and to Animal Patrol to see if there's an option. Does that work?
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think.
And for. And if we could get their names and addresses. I think we got it.
Yep.
If you want to give us the petitions, we'll receive and file those.
You want those now, Brian?
Yes.
You can provide additional ones.
Yeah, you can provide additional ones. And if you want that one back, we could take a copy of it and then give you those back.
You know what?
That's all right.
It's the effort that matters here. A word, that's great.
All right, so do we have a motion to receive and file?
Yeah, that's part of the motion, yep.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everything passes.
That's a good suggestion.
Seven, yes?
And I want to thank you both for coming down and watching. Appreciate it. Okay, that takes us to item 42. Item 42 is regarding the proposed streetscape and intersection improvements in the Beavordale Commercial area. Mr. Manager, should I refer that to you? And you can redirect.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'll say a few words, and then Mr. Coleman and Mr. Grease may want to speak as well. The summarized shortened version of this is this is a recommendation to the council to eliminate the roundabout, the infamous roundabout that's been proposed as part of the Beavordale Streetscape Project to be located at Urbendale and Beaver, to delete the roundabout from the planning going forward, but to retain the streetscape elements as well as the possibility of doing intersection improvements at that same intersection. It's important that the council act on this today, because you have under contract an engineer to work on the detailed plans for all of this work, including the roundabout. We've asked that engineer to hold off on the work because of the pending issues here. But it's important that we get back to them and revise that contract so they don't spend money needlessly designing something that is no longer apparently desired by the neighborhood. So, the recommendation is to proceed with the project minus the roundabout. There's a fairly long story that goes with this, and I'd be happy to go through that, but perhaps, given the hour, you don't want to hear all that and would accept. I did send a letter out to all of you and to others that sort of explains what's transpired recently. I do think it's the right course of action, and I recommend it to you.
Hallie?
This is actually what I consider to be a good development for this project. It's not ideal in the sense that it's not what we had started going for. The businesses had supported the Schmidt, and then there was an opposing Schmidt, anti-Schmidt, I guess if you will, petition that reached the threshold necessary to stop the process. So, we, Councilman Coleman, the city manager, engineering, several others met with business owners who are the most affected by this project, both for the Schmidt and against the Schmidt. It seemed that the roundabout was really the linchpin. They were concerned about construction delays and other issues with the roundabout. So, it seemed that they had common ground moving forward. It just didn't involve the roundabout. So, I think there's actually significantly more support for this. There's, in my estimation, very little opposition. The streetscape's going to continue to move forward. The intersection's going to be refined in a safer manner, some narrowing of streets and so forth. So, I think this is actually a good development in terms of neighborhood unity moving forward. I think it's something everyone can get behind, and I think it'll actually, in the long run, benefit the neighborhood and their fundraising efforts. So, I would be happy to move this item. I assume Chris also wants to make a statement.
Just a quick comment. I think this rewinds the clock about two years, because at that time, we hired an architect to do kind of some concept drawings. Never had thought of the roundabout or anything. They came back with that as a concept idea, along with other ideas. So, we're really back to where we started with a lot of support for a streetscape that the neighborhoods really embraced and the business owners do. We fiddled with that roundabout for a long time to see if we could build some consensus around it, and we couldn't. So, we won't have that time back, but it was probably a good effort, and I compliment all the people that really worked hard for that. But I think, as Hallie said, this is the best spot we've been in on this project in a couple of years.
Seven, yes?
All right. Item 43 is approving the Hubble Avenue Restriping Pilot Project with No Bicycle Lanes from Easton Boulevard to East 33rd Street. A roll call contains the alternate motion. The council communication is 12-586. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item?
I guess. I'm the lone wolf tonight. Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks again for the privilege to speak. My name's David Edwards. I live at 202 Williams Street, which is right behind the fairgrounds. I got involved in this issue early on out of concern for my neighbors. I was running for state senate at the time, doing a lot of door-knocking, talking to a lot of people that did not want this project to happen. That's why I got involved. It's why I've been involved from the beginning. I'm married to a very patient lady. If you knew me better, you would understand that. We've been married 27 years. Early on in our marriage, I was looking at buying a pickup truck. And I called her, and I said, "Honey, you know, I think the truck's a good deal. I'm going to buy it." And it was already sitting in the driveway. Okay? She said, "No, you don't. We're not going to buy the truck. We don't have the money." That was a well lesson that I learned to communicate more thoroughly with my wife. And the way that relates to this is someone with the city wrote a grant to restriping Hubble Avenue, and then went to the neighbors and said, "What do you think of this project?" When maybe it would have been more beneficial to come to the neighbors first and present this plan and say, "What do you think?", and then move forward with it. It seemed to got turned around, and people just feel like it's being forced on them. There's a lot of friction out there in the neighborhoods. That's why I'm speaking out against this issue. I know it's been brought up as a safety issue. There's been safety study done. And I believe one in 15 people in Iowa will have an accident with a deer. One in 95 children are born with autism. Okay, those are safety hazards. Two accidents a month out of 300,000 cars and trucks traveling a stretch of road is not really a significant safety issue to do something that the people really don't want done in their neighborhood. So, I'm asking you tonight to please leave Hubble Avenue as it is. I've heard comments from both sides, and a traffic engineer came and spoke to us and went back to the neighborhood, which was a great turnout for a meeting. People are very passionate. They showed up at the library, spoke out, mostly against it. But then some fellow from, I don't know, Ames, traffic engineer, really smart guy, stood up and said, "You know, this is a great deal. We need to do this to you." And I know what that personally made me feel like is a dummy sider. It really doesn't know what's good for our neighborhood and what's good for the people in our side of town. So, I've heard, "We're going to do this, and in a year from now, you'll thank us for it." And I don't believe that's the case. People really don't want this done on our side of town. So, I appreciate you taking the time to hear me out. I appreciate the fact that you did send this grant back once and then brought it back to life. So, I'm asking that you would send it back again, maybe look at the intersections, look at timed traffic lights, at countdown, truly where the problems are, and not create any where they're not. Thank you for your time.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and see what the council says. Bob, Skip?
I attended every meeting that was held relative to this. And although the neighbors were highly opposed to this, I think we accomplished a few things by seeing that there are some safety issues that can be addressed, and hopefully, they will be. And I think, you know, hopefully, it's an ongoing study there. Because if we can do anything to improve the safety, well, it's certainly to the benefit of everybody that drives that road. And, but, that being said, the neighbors were heavily opposed to this. I am going to go with the neighborhood and oppose this. I am going to go with the neighborhood and oppose this, and I'm sure there's other speakers, but then I'd like to come back for a motion.
Skip?
Well, I too attended all the meetings. And in fact, the last meeting, the majority of the people were opposed to this. There were some that were for it. However, I think we need to consider the fact that we had people that weren't from the east side. We actually had one gentleman that was from Earlham, Iowa, that was there to stir the you-know-what. He made that plainly clear. We had one guy that was quoted in the paper, had an article in there that was from Ankeny that's got nothing to do with this that was opposed to it, and I think he was there for the same reason. In the early meetings, there was a committee that was formed of the people that were concerned about this. And that committee got together and they met, and they came back, and it was, they said, "No bike lanes." But what that committee of all these same people said was, "Let's take a look at re-striping Hubble Avenue, three lanes from Easton to East 33rd." Well, the project came here, and we voted, I voted, and I want to make that clear. There's people that are saying, "I voted for the bike lanes. I voted to rescind that project." One of the members of that committee, Francis Pickray, stood up there and said, "Wait a minute. What about the committee that came out of these same people recommending the re-striping?" So we brought it back and had another neighborhood meeting that I'm already talking about. The city's Traffic and Transportation Safety Committee, their chair Carl Voss is here, they've recommended to do this striping on a trial basis. Six or seven neighborhoods, and I mean neighborhoods, recognized neighborhoods on these side have said, "We want to see this on a trial basis." We do have three neighborhoods on the east side that have said they'll remain neutral on it. We did have an expert who came uninvited from Iowa State that is a nationally recognized expert on traffic safety, especially on three and four-lane roads. He did not say, "You should do this." He said that he would recommend we try it if it's a trial basis. He did qualify his studies that sometimes this does not work, and you heard him yourself. Speak of one in particular that didn't work, but some others where they did work. I think that with the fact that we've got six or seven neighborhoods that want to support this on the east side, and we've got a national expert, and he did qualify himself, our own Traffic and Transportation Safety Committee has recommended this. Our own Traffic and Transportation Engineer is recommending this with their department. If the motion is there, I'm going to support this only on a trial basis for one year with the guarantee that after one year, it comes back and we have, I don't know how we're going to do it, but we need to get back to the same people and talk to them. And I know we're going to have the crash counts and everything else and see if it's working. If it doesn't, it should be reversed.
Frank?
Ms. Hensley?
I agree and appreciate your comments, Skip. I believe it would be important to bring together some of the individuals that have participated in the meetings and make sure that they can work with you and Bob, because you've really taken the lead on this, to determine what would be the measurement criteria. So we know what it is at the beginning of the project, and then at the end, and how we're going to measure getting input from people that use it all the time, people that use it occasionally, and making sure that there's agreement. And so you have people that are both for it and against it. I know we did that. I know people don't like to hear the word Ingersoll, but we did that, and we had a lot of good discussion, a lot of good input. And I believe the actual surveys that were completed by all the different parties are over 1,000. I think it was in the neighborhood of 1,000, which is very significant based upon that. And I think the pilot project and going that direction, and especially for a year, gives you great data and an opportunity for people to get into the flow of it. And if it doesn't work at the end of the year, then you go back.
Anybody else?
Well, I won't disagree with Skip and what he has as far as neighborhoods and that, but he did leave out one authority that had proposed for the safety issues, and that's the IDOT, or else they wouldn't have appropriated the money if they didn't believe in this. But I still am going to pursue the residents that live in the area who voted in opposition to this. And I'm going to vote on 43, number two, which is opposition to this, and send the money back to the state.
Motion is to move and send it back to the state and deny the re-striping.
Yes.
The motion is denied.
Can I make, go ahead, Skip. I wasn't going to make a motion. I was going to just make a comment because I didn't explain my vote. I was sensitive to the comments that the speakers made. But I want to tell you just a quick personal story that we went through this on Hickman and Beaver and Aurora. We were talking about Aurora earlier, out in my neighborhood. And I thought the experts that were coming in were completely wrong about this. And I went to the meetings opposed to the three-striping. I bought into it because of the tests that we did over time and saw how useful it was for the three-lane concept on a street like that. And I think Hickman in that area is somewhat a lot alike the Hubble. And I'm interested to see what happens. But if we pursued it, I would certainly pull the plug on it. I just wanted to explain that I, in no way, feel like we're trying to make anybody feel like we're smarter than them, or we're going to do it our way because that's the way we do it on the other side of town. I was slow to come to this belief as well.
I'll make a motion that we approve 43, but I want to make it perfectly clear that it's imperative that everybody be brought back to the table at the end of one year. And if it's not working, that it goes back to four lanes.
I would like to add to that, that if we determine it before one year, that we can return back to what it was if we determine it's not been feasible and it is counterproductive.
Takes a statum 44. Receive and file the report and recommendation of the Plan and Zoning Commission regarding the petition to establish the Ingersoll Grand Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District Schmidt. A, setting the date of hearing on the petition to establish the Ingersoll Grand Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District Schmidt for 12/17 of 12. Would be December 17th. Anybody here to speak on that item?
I'll move 44, 44A.
Item 45, an amendment to the Intergovernmental 28E that provides funding for the Greater Des Moines Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc., for the promotion of tourism and convention activities in the greater Des Moines area, adding the city of Indianola as a party. Anyone here to speak to this? Metting the 28E to add Indianola to the CVB?
Oh, you know, this is great news, and I think it's a real sign that our metro area is really on fire when it comes to these kinds of things and conventions, visitors, and so forth. You may have seen the new rollout of the new kind of branding campaign that the CVB did. That was good. And while I'm mentioning the good news about Indianola and them embracing us, I do want to tell the council, and we've never talked about it at this table, that the CVB board, which I represent you all on that board, is working with Ankeny, who has formalized and sent a letter saying they're going to leave the CVB. They did that almost several, several months ago. And I want to say that the contract gives them until July 1st to either leave the CVB or rescind that. And as we've really been successful in 28E regional organizations like the landfill, the Metro Waste Authority, or the WRA, or DART, the CVB, Bravo, it's really unfortunate that the council and the mayor and Ankeny have chosen to kind of abandon this particular group. And we're working pretty hard to try and get some traction so that in December, we might ask for them to put on their agenda reconsideration of that. So good news on the Indianola side-related CVB, really bad news for regionalism in our metro area with regard to Ankeny.
Well, they're going to be getting a new mayor, so maybe we'll-
They are.
-get some support.
And I understand they're poised to appoint, at least on an interim basis, till the citizens call for a former council member, Gary Lorenz. I suppose everybody knows that. I'm not breaking news here, but-
Okay. You're moving this?
Yep. I moved it. You know Gary, or do you do news?
Christine?
Seven yes?
Okay. Item 46, the budget for the downtown self-supported municipal improvement district Schmidt for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, council members, just a moment on this item. This is an action where each year, the council is required by law to approve the budgets for the various Schmidt districts that exist around the city. It's, I suppose, not commonly known. It seems like the Schmid's are generally driven by neighborhood organizations. But it's important to point out that, as a matter of fact, the Schmidt is a program that generates a tax dollar and therefore requires the review and approval of this council. The downtown Schmidt is a particularly important one because it generates significant revenue. The operation downtown and DCA folks do a great job with, have done a great job with it. But as we look to the future, there are a number of major projects in our downtown that will require the support of the downtown Schmidt. It's my intention to continue to work with them, as we have in the past, to look for ways to have this Schmidt provide financial support to the operation and maintenance of various public facilities. Great examples of that would be Riverwalk, or the Sculpture Park, or Nollum Plaza, assuming that gets done. There's many others as well. This is an important issue for the city. That is the manner in which these funds are spent. I simply wanted to make that point to you and tell you that we will be working on this particular issue and the funding of different projects in the coming year and perhaps beyond. So perhaps next year, when it comes back to you, we'll have a bit more to suggest to you in terms of the use of these funds in that regard.
I've got one question. Do we have this budget?
We did get a copy, yes. We, Skip requested it, and I requested it, and it's attached to-
Questions?
Yeah. Questions answered.
I think, I was sort of looking for it, and I hadn't seen it, so I'm glad somebody saw it.
I would just like to echo the comments that the city manager made. It's extremely important that we have agreement reached with the downtown community alliance group as we move forward with this. And one of the items, I know maintenance is an extremely significant issue, especially with all of the public spaces coming onboard. And the other item that I noted in reviewing the budget was the whole traffic management area. And I would just remind everybody that that was done in anticip, that was done as a result of I-235, but it continues to be a part of the ongoing budget. So I, and I know a lot of the work that they're doing, it appears to be in conjunction with DART, but I guess I'd just like to have ongoing discussions. So I think those two items, traffic management and ongoing maintenance, are key areas for focus.
I would like to say that I think they do great work. Certainly, the revenues that are out there, that are in this Schmidt, are significant, and they hopefully go to do a lot of good things. I'd like to see a budget that actually has line items and numbers on it. What's this?
That's the narrative explaining the line items. There you go.
Okay.
Do we want to table it till the next meeting? What's the timeline for this? It's in our budget cycle, so I believe we do have time.
Well, it's for the fiscal year that ends June 30 of '14, so I'm assuming it probably doesn't start till-
I think you can delay it for, until the next meeting.
Till the next council meeting.
I don't think that's a problem.
I'd like to at least review it.
I'm comfortable making the motion that we delay it until the next council meeting. But it also raises a question, because we have so many different Schmidt districts right now. It would be nice if we could maybe even have a workshop to look at the Schmidt districts because all their budgets are going to be coming forward. You've got the Highland Park. You're going to have Sherman Hill. You've got the downtown, which is obviously the biggest one, but it would just be nice maybe to-
It is true. And I don't mean to minimize the others, but by comparison, this is clearly the biggest one with the most decisions. The others have relatively small revenues that are essentially devoted to the maintenance of the streetscape projects. We'd be happy, obviously, to do all that, get it to you.
So I'm not voting no. I'm voting to continue, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm glad we voted to continue because it looks like they're operating at a loss for the proposed budget.
Seven yes?
Okay. Item 47, a review of the zoning board of adjustment decision to grant two variances of separation requirements and a conditional use permit for the property at 3804 Hubble Avenue for the use as a liquor store. The roll call contains alternative motions, council communication number 12-580. Bob, I think this probably is-
I think you got, we have a speaker here?
My name is Benny Nat. My father owns, has owned the property, or ran the property for about seven years. And he retired two years ago, and, or two and a half years ago. I worked for the state of Iowa judicial branch. He asked me, he wanted to retire. He wanted me to run the businesses. At that time, I wasn't aware that the 60-40 rule would come into effect. And essentially, if we're not granted this variance, we would probably shut down by the end of next year. And I've, we haven't had any problems with the neighborhood. We had signatures from the neighborhood saying that they had no problems with us doing this. It was just essentially, we would stay exactly the same as we are now. We don't have, we don't have too many police calls. We don't have, we don't have too much trouble in the neighborhood. Just our operation would stay the same. It would just be labeled differently as a liquor store.
So what's the percentage of food sales that you currently have?
We are at about 37, 38 percent, but we probably won't be able to keep that up. So that's why we're asking for the variance.
So technically, you haven't even been in compliance with the ordinance before the change?
No, we have been in compliance.
You have been?
Yes.
You know, I don't know how they got a license in the first place. They're right across the street from the Douglas School-
Right.
-which is now a church. And so it's just the width of the pavement from the playground area till their place of business.
Actually-
How did that ever get approved in the first place?
Actually, the entrance for the church is all the way around on the other side of the street. It's the backside, there's fence, there's no outlet for anything on that, on our side of the street.
I think it's just the property line though, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Is what the measurement goes from?
So is this one business of several that you have in the city?
No, this is the one-
This is the only business?
Yes.
And it's, the ordinance to get to the 60 percent does not have to be done until-
End of this year.
Is it the end of next year? Isn't it the end of next year? Is it the end, it's the end of next year, and you're saying you just cannot possibly get there?
Well, a pack of potato chips or a candy costs anywhere from $1 to $1.50. If I sell one pack of cigarettes, that's six bucks to $7. It's just not doable. It's, I would have to, I don't, we wouldn't even know where to begin. It's just the, like, if somebody bought a six-pack of beer or a pack of cigarettes, it would be seven bucks. If they bought five packs of chips, that would come out to one pack of cigarettes. It's hard to do. It's really hard. And we explained ourselves at the zoning board meeting as well, and they agreed with us. And I request the same from you guys.
I really agree with the zoning board.
Ben, with all due respect-
Yes, sir.
-I have gotten so many calls from the residences north of there about the goings-on at your business. And in particular, there's some duplexes just to the north and across the street, and they said there's a huge amount of youth that go to your place and come out of there with grocery sacks. They don't know what's in there, but they can't imagine- They don't know what's in there, but they can't imagine. I've been in your store, and I can't imagine what they're buying unless cigarettes or booze. I just can't see it.
Um, the, there's, the duplexes, uh, there's, uh, people that live in the duplex that come in to the store and go back towards the duplexes. I think there's, like, three houses that are, that's younger people, they're all, I've, you know, they come into the store, buy their stuff, whatever they need, and go back to their s- house. Maybe that's what they're noticing.
Well, and another thing that they're complaining about is the amount of youth that are hanging around behind your store.
Okay.
And I, I do have one more question for you. Who owns Nat's liquor on Second Avenue?
That's my father. He still runs that. I, I take care of it sometimes, but he's, we taking care of that.
Thanks for stopping.
And, um, I have recently, since I talked to the neighbors, I have, uh, provided security. I do have security now from, uh, 3:00 in the afternoon till I close. I talk to all the neighbors, ask them for, what their concerns were with our store, if they had any problems with the, with the store, and that's what they ask, that there were some people that were hanging out, and which I did, I have hired security. I have, every day, seven days a week, I have security working at my store now.
You've gone, though, from the beginning of your comments to saying you had support of the neighbors, now to, now to, um, justifying and responding to their concerns, which is problematic to me.
Um, I have supported. They said they didn't have a problem, whatever, um, concerns that they had, I addressed them, and they didn't have any issues.
You changed your story.
What, what, what type of security are you talking, a friend that you've hired, or?
No, actually, uh, a gentleman. He's been with the security company. He's not with the security company, but he's independent, but, um, his name is Travis Martinez, and he's, uh, he's worked with security companies before, and he wants to do business, or work on his own, so I, it's not a company, I can ha- I mean-
What, what time do you close?
Midnight, on, on weekdays, and 2:00 on, uh, Fridays and Saturdays.
So he's working about eight or nine hours a day, seven days a week?
Usually, yes.
I, Jeff, can you summarize what the action is before us? Because my, my, maybe say that, and then I have a comment, so we can maybe close this.
Sure, that, it, uh, the, the action is for council to do one of, one of three things, either remand the decision to the ZBA for further study, to take no action, in which case it becomes final on November 29th, or to decide to, um, not remand, to decide not to remand it, in which case it would take effect.
That, when you say take effect, do you mean they'd be granted the license?
The ZBA's action already.
Exactly.
And, and so what, what's happened here is there's been a variance granted, uh, on a number of issues. Staff's recommendation is obviously the first option that I just outlined, which is to remand it for further study.
Now, can I give you-
Yeah.
...my two bits on it?
Yeah.
It, it's interesting, and, and I gotta tell you, I, I think that I agree with staff to remand it back to the, uh, zoning board of adjustment. My problem with the whole thing is that it, it kinda works around the decision that we made not so long ago regarding the distance between liquor stores because of neighborhood concern about the proliferation of them. This actually works absolutely to nullify what we've done, and essentially grants zoning board to say, hey, that, that regulation and that code, I believe it's, what is it, 20? Chapter 10 of our, of our code, of the city code, uh, that designates how this thing is to take place, is sort of null and void, and you just take it to the zoning board of adjustment. I don't, I don't think that's the purpose for which we, we put this together. I think that they ought to review it, and, 'cause it really looks like the only viable use, you know, for this, sounds like a liquor store.
Yes.
I mean, that's it. I'm, I've got a concern that it sort of works against everything we've tried to do, and-
Well, I, I, I have a concern, and I was actually with the city manager last week, that I think when you, when you look at whether or not we're going to award this license or not, and the buffer distance, you know, not only are we, not only would be, we be allowing him to operate a liquor license, but essentially we're giving him that territory because nobody can come in and compete with him. And, and that's a problem, I think, in the way that the ordinance is currently drafted, because it, we, we, we can't allow people. I have serious concerns with allowing this liquor license to continue, and if that means that we should remand it to the board of adjustment for further study, that's what I'm in support of. There's other people that are closer to that geographically, into those neighbors, so I'd allow them to make a motion, but I would make it absent other comments, that I, I think we need to continue to, to push for this.
Yep. And can, can I just say, I, I just agree completely, because we have had a lot of discussion about this, and I feel like, you know, going back to what the mayor said, it's a backdoor way to allow this to happen. And I would like to send a very strong message back to board of adjustment, that this, this is not what we want. And I'm gonna be very vocal about this. I mean, you, you know, I'm sorry, sir, I, I read the blue letter and all of the information in there as to what happened at board of adjustment, and I have absolutely no sympathy. You have known, your business has known where you need to be, and you're asking for a waiver from that, and you can't even get up to what the old ordinance was.
We are, uh, under the old ordinance, so-
Not at 48 percent or not.
He's really in violation of three issues here. One is a quarter-mile distance, 'cause there's a, another store within that. Uh, the, the distance between a church, and then the percentage of, uh, non-liquor or cigarette sales.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm willing to make the motion, uh, staff, to accept staff and return it to the zoning board of adjustment.
I'm wholly supportive of it.
Very.
The, in my mind, the purpose of our ordinance, and I don't think that we've gotten there 100 percent, was, was not just to slow down the proliferation of Class E liquor license, it was to slow down those that are ravaging and hurting our neighborhoods. And I think in, you know, in its place, what we have is, we've locked out a lot of competition that would at least bring new buildings, high-quality, secured environments to neighborhoods that would be much better off, and, and, um, I, I made some suggestions to the city manager last week, and he said he'd look at some of them, and I hope we can schedule a workshop sometime to have a broader discussion on whether or not our ordinance hit the mark.
So this will go back to zoning board of adjustment.
Question for legal. Now, um, based upon this going back to board of adjustment, can you just explain, he'll be able to continue operating the business as is right now, correct?
That's correct.
Until any final, it, his last pro- his last step that he'll go back to will be board of adjustment, and ultimately could come back here.
Well, the, this, council needs to remember, this is one, uh, one of the items where council can't ultimately, um, reverse the zoning board of adjustment. You can only direct it back and ask them to look at it again, and they, they can respond in any, uh, of a number of ways. Uh, so the license wouldn't necessarily come back here, and then depending on what happens, council would have to make a decision going forward, what council wants to do about that.
Could we make sure that council members receive, um, a le- a copy of a letter, or some communication as to the outcome of that meeting?
Oh, sure.
And is it appropriate that, uh, that, that you represent the council? I mean, I think you have a strong sense of where, where we are on this.
The, um, this is a really interesting area, because you have, uh, we already have a staff member, uh, who represents the, the zoning board of adjustment. If council will recall, um, if, if that go, if, if, for example, it ultimately goes in a direction council doesn't approve of, then my office won't be able to represent either party, because we already represent each of them. Certainly the manager's office can convey, uh, in strong terms, uh, the results of your discussion here. Can you, can, uh, you can certainly send a letter.
Signed by all the council?
Uh, you, you can certainly do that, so that they understand what the issue is. You can send a letter signed by, uh, the manager. The idea here is that the, the board needs to re, uh, what council's directing is that the board, um, re-study the issue, uh, and, and review in light of council's, um, concerns that are evidenced, and if you want to specify those out more clearly, that can be done.
Mr. Lester, a final question for me. You, you mentioned representing either party in the, uh, you know, in any subsequent debate or process. Can you send a council attorney communication as to what our rights are if the zoning board of adjustment were to award the license, us meaning the city council?
Certainly, we can do that.
Thank you.
I mean, just to make clear, I really haven't had that many police calls. I haven't had too many complaints. I think we had, like, eight or seven police calls in the year, compared to stores that are on some other, on the other side of town that have 150, 200 calls a year. We're doing good business. We, I get along with my neighbors. I, I have no, I don't think any of my neighbors have any problem with us just operating the way we are operating. And I'm just not asking for any changes, just like, so that we can operate just normal, just as we are as of right now. And we have no issues with any of our neighbors, any of our neighbor, neighborhood associations. We haven't had any police calls, we haven't had any major crimes in our parking lot, we haven't had anybody shot, anybody killed in our parking lot. All I'm asking for is just to do business as I am doing business right now, and there's, if you would like me to make any changes, I can do that. I, I mean, if you like me to hire more security, if you want more lighting put up, every, everything that the zoning commission asked for, we, um, we did. We ha- we put up lights, we, we have security cameras, we have, uh, contact numbers, a- anything that the zoning asked for, we did that for it. And, uh, Sue Ann Donovan actually recommended that we do, do go through this process, and she's the one that actually helped us with everything, that this would be the best course of action for our business if we did this, the, this process.
I understand.
And I-
Ben, let, let me, um, this council has sort of agonized over this issue for a couple of years.
I understand that, yes.
And, uh, and we tried to put together a pretty clear ordinance about how we should proceed, not just about your business, but about everything that's going on across the city.
Yes.
And I think it was, uh, the, the interest of the council to set some pretty specific rules about how this should happen.
I understand.
As Bob pointed out, distance from churches, distance from schools, distance from other establishments that sell, uh, alcohol, and the availability that, you know, a, a store like yours could also sell food product, but apparently you're not even close to meeting that, that kind of a standard, where you get 50 percent of your sales to, to food. So, what we're asking is for them to, to relook at it, and rather than just totally overrule what the council set out because of our concerns that have been registered by lots of our citizens, to, uh, say, hey, review it, maybe there's a way that we can work around it.
Okay.
But let's, let's, uh, look at our ordinance. Mr. Manager, do you have a couple of thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I, I just, um, I, I feel your pain on this. Uh, I, I think your course of action that you recommended here to remand it back with the letter signed by all of you is, is the strongest position you can take, and I think you're on the right path, so.
At the end of the day, probably the zoning board of adjustment is gonna make the final decision here.
Okay.
Not, not our body.
Okay.
But, we're gonna have to consider sitting down with them at some point and, and figuring out who does what.
Okay.
Okay? Ben, thanks for coming down. I, uh, it, it is a tough issue.
Yeah, I understand this, Ben scores in-
But as we speak, you're still in business the way you were, and let's, uh, keep up the good work, and, and no violations, no crimes, no beatings, no anything in the parking lot. It sounds like you've taken care of that, so can you keep that up?
We have, we, that, we've done absolutely everything that the zoning asked us to do. Everything to, down to the details. We have cameras all around our building, we have lighting everywhere, none, not one corner of our lot not lit. We, uh, we've, I've, I have the numbers for, in case of emergency, if anybody, any customer, any neighborhood-
I think in that regard, you're, you're doing a first-class job. So, thank you very much. Appreciate your, your, bringing your concerns to us. I need a motion to adjourn the city council and reconvene his board of health. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, now sit as board of health. One is approving the legal department to proceed with court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at 1600 Capitol Avenue. It's a fire-damaged church. Item two is a communication from the American Family Insurance Group dated October 23rd to 12th stating that their insured at 2711 South Union Street sustained a fire loss to a garage. So they're holding, uh, a fire escrow in the amount of $10,000. So we're just receiving a communication on item two, and we're approving, uh, the legal department to proceed in item one. Is anyone here to speak to either the item at 1600 Capitol Avenue, or the second item, uh, communication on 2711 South Union Street? Seeing none, could we have a motion for those two?
I'll move one and two.
It's been moved to approve, and, secondly, to receive the communication. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, uh, could we have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are, sit adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, have a safe holiday, and we'll see you in two weeks.